Good evening. Welcome to the May 6th Town Council, excuse me, please. The meeting has started. I need silence, please. Hi, meeting's started. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting on May 6th. I'm calling the meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is roll call.
Councilor Maybine.
President.
Councilor Donovan.
Here.
Councilor Katerina.
Here.
Councilor Blaze.
Here.
Councilor Hayes.
Here.
Council Chair Holbrook.
I am here. And Councilor St. Clair unfortunately had to go home to be with his sick child this evening. Item number four is General Public Comments. Before we go into that, I do want to remind everyone that it is your name, address, and three minutes. We do also have Rules of Decorum for General Public Comments, which are as follows. Citizens shall direct their remarks exclusively to the Council Chair unless as otherwise directed by the Chair. Their statements are to avoid personal, rude, or provocative remarks. All statements should respect the dignity and seriousness of the proceedings. Citizens conduct themselves in a manner expected of all meeting participants. It shall be at the discretion of the Council Chair to ask any persons making inappropriate statements and/or conducting themselves in a disrespectful manner to cease such action or risk being asked to be seated or removed. So, before we come into General Public Comments, it was brought to my attention we do have a set of kids from a...
Eighth grade class.
Eighth grade class that had a quick, high school, sorry, high school class that had a quick demonstration. So if you wouldn't mind, please come up to the podium. Name and address, please.
Dylan Hinton, 3 Primrose Lane.
McKenna Canty, 11 Bigfoot Street.
I'm Claire Merrill, 29 G Macove, Mill Road. So we are here today in... Where do you think you can go?
Oh, um, we're here today in, um, in support of one-on-one technology at the high school.
Currently, students have one-on-one technology from grades nine to 12 and three to eight.
Um, however, students at the high school don't have individual laptops and are still expected to have some work through Google Drive?
So speaking from personal experience, I have a sister who is a junior at the high school and does not have a personal laptop. Occasionally, she is forced to ask me to borrow my school laptop to submit things to her teachers through Google Drive. We think that it is unreasonable for high school teachers to expect their students to be able to provide and pay for individual laptops that they can use at home.
If teachers distribute assignments digitally, students can easily review their work in all one place. Digital copies of work can also help students by making it easy to edit and change work.
This can be a benefit for teachers as well. How many students turn work into Google Drive or Google Classroom is easier than collecting and storing student stacks of paper?
So this is an example of how several students can be on one document at once on Google Drive. This benefits both teachers and students because it makes their work time more productive and successful. So by each student having their own laptop, they can all join together. And you can't do this if there are not individual laptops.
Oh, this is an example of students using SketchUp, which is a designing, measuring program. This was used in the STEM class in Technology Engineering.
So it's another example of how students need their laptops in their everyday student lives.
This is an example of how students can check their grades on Power School using their laptop.
All teachers expect that students know their grades and what they've gotten on recent quizzes and tests. So if students don't have internet access at home, there's no way they can access it. So as you can see, laptops are very important for student use. And we hope that you can consider this in next year's budget.
Also, um, teachers have been using quizzes and tests more often on digital because it helps them keep track of them and grade them. And right now, all, there are so many different ways for us to do research. And it's been noticed that it's a lot harder to do research when you have to write it by paper and pencil. So it's, it's an overall pretty good tool to have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I am Jennifer Carey. And I live on 17 Pumpkin Lane. I'm a senior at Scarborough High School. And I am here to advocate for one-on-one technology. Um, I'd like you to think about this. Imagine if you walked into work one day, it's an average day, and your boss says, "Hey, you can't use your computer and you can't use your phone. Here is a notebook and a pencil and have a great day." So you have to research, you have to stay on those conference calls. You have to apply yourself to work without any of the technology you're used to. It must sound pretty difficult, huh? Well, that's what students face in the high school from day to day. Because we can't access the internet. We can't help ourselves learn because we don't have technology. And there's so many ways it can be applied, especially with the Lenovo yogas. My English class is actually test running. There's so many creative ways because it's a computer. And then it can turn over and it can flip into a laptop. So it can be used in art classes with the right applications. Like if you have Photoshop on them and you have a stylus, which are easily like maybe one or two bucks. You can sketch out what you want to paint in art class. And you can use it to take notes in physics and make graphs. And you can take down lab notes without having to worry about cell checking and crossing things out and getting the information wrong because it's really easy to correct it. And there's... And then it's also super easy for teachers to connect with their students. Like the middle schoolers showed you, they can share Google Documents with each other. And then the teachers can check in on how the students are doing on their work without having, without the student having to get up and go to the teacher to ask for help. It's at the tip of their fingers. And they can directly get their grades because without the need to pass in papers and take notes on the papers and then hand it back, it's all done online and you can get an email. Or it'll just give you a little icon. And you'll get your grade back instantaneously. And there's no need to schedule testing anymore. I know the MEAs were super difficult on the high school. And I was a senior, so I didn't have to take them. But scheduling them around the juniors, the department with only three labs, it was time-consuming and confusing for both the teachers and the students. With one-on-one technology, they could get it done in one day. And no one would have to worry about it. It would just be one day rather than an entire month of working planning. And the teachers, they have to book these three labs months in advance just to even hope of getting in to get their work done. And it's insanely difficult because sometimes they'll show up with their class and someone else will already be in there. And like one of the middle school students said, not all high schoolers have personal laptops. And yet they're still expected to type their homework and have it ready to produce the next day. And that's not a feasible plan because the library doesn't have enough computers to support all the students who don't have personal computers at home. So one-on-one technology would make it so much easier for everyone to get their work done on time. And, hold on one second. And, sorry about that paper. It'd be easier if I had a laptop. And I know that some of the concerns people might have were that it's just an overdone word processor or that kids might waste time with it. But a computer is a tool. And a tool, when given the right application, can be the most useful thing in the world. And I know the students, the teachers and the students at Scarborough High School can work together to make this the best tool that you could offer. Thank you.
So now that we have our, we've had an opportunity here from some students. This is General Public Comments. You'll have three minutes to speak. You'll state your name and address. We unfortunately don't have the return of our timer. So G Marie is running timer for us tonight. Again, General Public Comments, just as a friendly reminder, is for non-agenda items.
Hi, my name is Mike Doyle. I live at 3 Shady Lane in Felmouth. I own FelmouthToday.me. I've done a series of stories and articles about the Felmouth Police Department in what I would term misconduct. I'm here tonight to talk about post-traumatic stress disorder as it applies to victims of sexual abuse. Two years ago, a man came to the police department to complain about a business owner in Scarborough who had sexually assaulted him. As far as he knows, nothing has been done about it two years later. The stress of being sexually abused added up to a point where he attacked the business owner here in Scarborough, seriously beating him. He's now under indictment, facing six felony counts. Had his complaint been dealt with. And the business owner investigated, arrested, prosecuted. It's unlikely he would have come to the person's house to give him a beating. And I'd like to know, when is Andrew Cusack going to be investigated by Chief Moulton?
Excuse me, Mr. Doyle, I believe it is?
Yes.
I do want to remind you of the Rules of Decorum.
Right. This is a public forum and free speech still takes place in the United States. And this is freedom of speech.
You are making some pretty hefty accusations. I am calling it out of order.
I've read the court documents, ma'am. I know what I'm talking about. I know what happened to Mr. Cusack at his house.
Alright, you are out of order. Please, please be seated.
Well, I want the town to know that this is an ongoing problem, just like the benefit chief of police covering up for police officers there.
Officer Doyle, you are out of order.
I understand that.
You need to sit down.
And this is out of order. Thank you.
Have a good night. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Robert Rovner, 4 King Street, Pine Point. Robert Rovner, 4 King Street, Pine Point. Um, I don't know how I can follow those two presentations. I don't have any kids that live in town. And I have one that's 44, he lives in Arizona. And I don't have any lobbies with me tonight. I was surprised that students wouldn't have spoken under Order Number 15-026 as most of us other mortals are required to this evening. Um, I've been here for eight years. And for eight years, we've passed substantial budgets in this town for education. Tell me if you want me to stop to, you know, file this under 15026. But, um, the students in this community are extremely fortunate. Thirty-nine million dollar budget last year. It doesn't matter if it's 39, 36, 44, doesn't matter. They're going to get a phenomenal education. Um, and yet, we're short a million dollars. We don't have a million dollars for computers in the school budget. Somehow, the town has found a way to fund a million dollars for 1,200 computers, pay it off within three years, have the tax, I'm sorry, have the taxpayers pay it off within three years. And at the end of that three-year period, they'll be obsolete and we're going to need new computers. I don't know. If I ever came home and said to my wife, "Listen, I want to buy something for an extraordinary amount of money. In three years, we're going to have to get rid of it and start all over again," she would have divorced me 10 times over. So I don't quite understand that. What I would recommend is that, it's been recommended that this million dollars be put through as a capital improvement. Capital improvements generally aren't something like a computer. They're generally like road construction, air conditioning for the buildings, for the schools, et cetera, et cetera. I would propose to open this up to the public, to all of my fellow taxpayers, and put it on a special referendum at the time that we take the school vote. And let's see if they want to channel a million dollars as a capital improvement for an item that's going to be obsolete, for 1,200 pieces that are going to be obsolete in three years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Larry Hartwell. I live at 9 Period Drive here in Scarborough. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I thought the budget forum last Thursday was well organized. A lot of ground was covered. And it should be considered again for next year. Members of the public were respectful and quiet for the full two hours. One of the very few exceptions was when my school spending question, which was number three, was answered. I'd asked, "What was the actual amount of money spent in 2010 and 2015? And what was the percentage increase?" The increase was $6.9 million, 19.7%. Yes, 19.7% in five years. Based on their written response, it looks like they used a budgeted amount for 2010 and not the actual amount spent, a difference of $1.1 million. Taking this into consideration and still using the 2015 amount, the increase for the five-year period is 23.5%. Just one more set of numbers. In the school's written response to my question number three, they include a chart which shows an additional $3.4 million of spending. According to these figures, we have a 20.2% increase over the five years. In my follow-up question, somehow listed as number 27 on the municipal side, they explain that the amounts, the amounts that are stated are not part of the school budget, which is voted on by the taxpayers. I did not know that. I thought all, I thought we were voting on everything. I thought it was all in one. So there's 3.4 million that doesn't go to the voters for their approval. And I don't know how familiar the council is with that. The takeaway point is the budget has grown by at least 20% over the past five years. Now, I've served on a school board, been on the finance committee, negotiations and budget committee. And if I was a current member of the school board, I too would be supporting the proposed budget. That would be my duty and responsibility. You are members of the Town Council. The council and its budget committee have done an admirable job with the town's side of the budget in both the recent past and what the budget committee has done to date, less than 2% increase. In my opinion, the council dropped the ball either last year or the prior year when you requested the departments to come in with increases limited 3%. All the departments complied except the school department, coming in with, say, 10% and settling for 6.9%. Control of the school's spending rests with and is the responsibility of the council and the budget committee. Who in this room or community has seen a 20% increase in their wages or salaries over the past 20 years? Few to none. I would ask you to consider setting the school's total budget, the school's total net budget increase currently at 10.13% at 3% this year. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is William Bly. And I reside at 10 Ottawa Woods Road here in Scarborough. It feels like, once again, it's Groundhog Day. We have the same battle of, we're dealing with the same issues. And I just want to point a couple of things out. As a concerned parent, I have to say, I'm pretty amazed by the amount of work that these teachers do for our children with the very little support they get financially. Costs continue to go up every year. Costs for salaries and increases, health benefits. The costs for health benefits go up every year. And those benefits are pared back by these companies every year. The costs of fuel go up. The cost to educate our children go up when we start talking about laptops. And they've done a tremendous job with very little support. And I think what makes a community isn't the roads. It's not the stoplights, it's not the police department. It's the people. And people come here for the school system. And I've said this probably three or four years in a row now. When we first made the decision to move from Portland to Scarborough, Scarborough was ranked as the number three school in the state. And again, not to take away from any of the efforts that the teachers are putting in. My son is getting a good, basic education in the fourth grade. But there have been so many cutbacks. He gets music one hour, once per week. And people may think that's sufficient. But the reality is, music and foreign language programs that have been cut back to the bone, to the point where children aren't receiving foreign language education until the eighth grade. These are things that help our children learn and their brains develop. We're doing our children a disservice by continuing to support, to provide little support for the school budget. And there are hard choices. I don't pretend to want anybody's job on this committee. You have a very difficult job ahead of you to decide where you're going to cut back. Governor Lapage has not made your jobs any easier, obviously, by cutting funding to this community. And we've seen funding increase in other communities, and it's very frustrating. But I'm asking you to please tread lightly with the school budget issue. I know it's a political football. But people will leave the community. And to give you a personal example, we brought our child to take a look at the Waldorf School up in Freeport. We haven't made a decision. We really like the school. But again, we like the education he's receiving here. But ultimately, if we chose to send our child to a different school where we thought he would get a better overall education, that would mean we would leave the community of Scarborough. And that could be something in the long term that this community faces if we don't fund these budgets appropriately. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Betsy Gleistine. I'm from 14 Long Meadow Road. And I would like to commend the Board of Education for working this year to try to subcontract some services in order to save a significant amount of money. That did not work out. But there is legislation in Augusta right now, LD 1010, to allow schools the leeway to subcontract some services. Representative Shirocky was asked by the Maine School Management Association to support this. I don't know where our other reps stand on it. But she did testify in support of this bill in front of the Labor Committee today. And I would urge the public, the board, and the Town Council to support LD 1010 so that we can find more creative solutions to save money and, instead of just cuts.
Deborah Fue Schertman, 15 Fairway Drive. I wanted to start out by commending the Town Council and the school board this year for the different ways that they've been doing things in the paper, running regular articles to inform the public of actually what you're dealing with as opposed to kind of hearsay in editorials and stuff. It's been really great and the fact that you're working together. I'd just like to, a couple of points. Scarborough does have a great educational system. But we live in a global community. And if you look outside of Maine, up to Massachusetts, to other countries, they really put education a lot higher on their list. And our students are going to be competing in the national and world arena. I also want everyone to think about what their education was like when they went to school. I'm unfortunately over the median age of a person who lives in Maine. So I'm part of the problem, the graying problem. When I went to school, we just had a regular old telephone, no cell phones. I went to college and cutting edge at the college was a computer lab where we could do our papers on a word processing thing. And I took basic computer programming. That was about it. That was cutting edge at a private education, a private college. If you think now, I mean, to really compete, have a laptop, have a cell phone, it's, you can't do without that. And I have two students now at the high school. You know, we're fortunate enough to be able to have bought them laptops. I don't know how they could do without it. They're working hours and hours in the evening, looking up sources, writing their papers. They could not be good students without their computers. And I feel really poorly for the people in this community who can't give that to their kids. We also, and I know this isn't part of it, but we also don't have late buses and a lot of other communities do. And students that don't have a parent that can come get them can't do any after-school activities, teams, tutors, you know, extra help from teachers, that kind of thing. So I'm not, I know that there might be some compromises on the kind of computers we get, you know, maybe not touchscreen, maybe we do it over a two-year period. But I really think to be able to compete, just like a lot of the communities around Southern Maine have already done, we really need to look into the one-on-one technology. And we need to think about long-term planning for this community as opposed to just the one-year budget and hitting the schools, which they can't raise their own revenue, they can't increase fees, things like that, which a lot of people, the municipal side can do. And they've been hit from the state year after year too with decreased funding. So unfortunately, the town has to come up with, or try to come up with some of the difference. Thank you.
And anybody else? And just a friendly reminder, we do have an agenda item for a public hearing for the budget. So General Public Comments are for non-agenda items. So if there's anybody that, I mean, certainly, go by.
So is this the time to talk about the budget or not?
We do have a public hearing a little later in the evening.
I'll wait then.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Alright, well, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move right on into the next item, which is item number five, Minutes of the April 15th, 2015 Regular Meeting. Is there a motion?
Who approval?
Second. And any discussion? No admissions, alright. Seeing none, all those in favor, and that is unanimous. Item number six is adjustments to the agenda. We have none at this time. So item number seven is the Treasurer's Warrants, which I will sign throughout the meeting later. And item number eight, non-action items, we have none at this time. So moving along into Order Number 14-103, is a 7:00 PM public hearing and schedule a second reading on the proposed First Amendment to Contract Zone 3, Maine Life Care Retirement Community, Inc., located at 15 Piper Road. Again, this is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Ron Epstein. I represent Piper Shores. With me here tonight is Jim Adamowicz, the CEO of Piper Shores, and Michael Tadamo Wideland, from Faith Crawford, who's doing the civil engineering for the project. I'll be brief since this is our third time before you. But we started last September with a joint workshop with the Town Council and the Planning Board. We then refined plans and met with you in December, in which you gave preliminary approval for the plan, which would be limited to, at that time, 28 new assisted living units, all to be built over the existing parking lot and a small arts building. Since that time, we've been before the Planning Board. And the Planning Board has granted preliminary site plan and subdivision approval for the project. And so we're here tonight for the first formal reading on the Amendment to the Contract Zone. The only cha- The only changes since what you saw in December 2014 are the addition of two additional assisted living units and a $40,000 contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. Other than that, the project is as presented. It'll be a total of 30 assisted living units, 14 of which are for memory care, and all of those will be built over the existing parking lot at Piper Shore. Thank you, and we're pleased to answer any questions.
Thanks for that introduction. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? All right, and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And pleasure of the council?
Who approves?
The second reading.
The second reading will be scheduled for May 20th.
Oh, oh, oh. I have a paper right there. Well, we don't jump in the gun on that one, so. There is no second reading. Is there any questions from the council on this item? All right, and I do just want to just kind of recap. I do want to thank Piper Shores for coming back, and certainly, there was some debate about, in this particular contract, about having a affordable provision somehow. So I am quite happy to see that get added in as a, as a momentum, as a movement for some affordable housing. Well, and number 15-026 is public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2016 municipal school budget. So feel free to go ahead and line right up, and then you can head right up to the end of the hallway if we ask to. But name, address, and you do have three minutes for the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Marcy. I live at 5 Woodfield Drive, and I'm also a member of the school board. And I generally prefer to save my remarks for the school board meetings, but when I would like an audience, I have to come here because nobody comes to our meetings. My message tonight is to really defend the school board and defend the school leaders. It seems that I have to come to this meeting every year to defend our intentions and our intelligence. We are good and conscientious stewards of taxpayers' money. Three of the seven members of the school board were on the steering committee for Wentworth Building Committee. The administrators that we also employ today were instrumental in designing the incredibly intelligent, practical building you see today. Not only was the project $3 million below the amount overwhelmingly approved by voters, we will also close the books with an additional quarter million dollars ready to pay down the principal on existing bonds. We built that school to state standards with one exception, the artwork. A state-funded project requires 1% of the total budget to be spent on the inclusion of public art. The amount spent for the gorgeous stained glass sculpture at Wentworth was a tiny fraction of what would be required by the state. The only reason anyone around town remembers what the art costs, $40,000, not $80,000, by the way, is because of my, actual, my plan to implement the donor brick program in an effort to offset some costs to taxpayers. To date, the ongoing fundraiser has reached about half, a little over half of its original goal. And at that point, we were under no obligation to come up with any creative financing for the art. We had the money, we were under budget. That was something we did above and beyond to try to lessen the burden on taxpayers. And the point of all that is to inform you that Wentworth students are using laptops today for grades three through five every day. They're using this week for mandatory online standardized testing. And because of the incredible negotiation and research skills of Jennifer Lim and the foresight of the steering committee to pursue one-to-one for our students at bargain basement pricing. The same outstanding work ethic and attention to detail was put into action again over the course of two years to develop the one-to-one laptop proposal for the high school. This isn't a quick money grab, as I've heard described by detractors. This is a necessary proposal to give our students the tools they need to learn and succeed in 2015. Providing a school-owned laptop to our high school students is no more a gift to our students than a math book, microscope, indoor plumbing, or electricity. The idea that parents should have to buy the laptops is not only morally reprehensible, but also against state law. Computers are the textbook of 2015. Our surrounding districts have already recognized that, and their students have had that advantage for many, many years. We cannot and will not charge a student to access a basic element for learning. I will just wrap up to say that you all have iPads provided by the town. You are not expected to do your job without it. Let's stop playing politics with our students and allow them the same opportunity. Thank you.
Good evening. Donna Beely, and I'm the Scarborough School Board Chair. Among the many responsibilities of the school board, we are charged with evaluating and analyzing the school budget, and then bringing forth a responsible budget. You elected us to do that, and that is exactly what we have done. This year, the loss of state revenues, along with the additional increases in fixed costs and unfunded state mandates, have caused the board to arrive at a strictly needs-based budget with a meager increase of less than 1% in school improvement. The two finance committees have worked very hard this year to answer all the questions presented by our citizens on the municipal and school side. All the answers to the school questions from our community are on the website, should you have any. The State's School Funding Formula, or General Purpose Aid to Schools, is not going to change in the near future. A few years ago, the legislature commissioned an organization to evaluate the appropriateness of the school funding formula. The results outlined in the Picas report found that Maine is doing quite well in comparison to other states with regards to how we fund schools. Our legislators tell us that compared to other towns, Scarborough is considered a wealthy town due to property valuations. In their minds, this town has the means to provide for our town and our schools. We are near the bottom in terms of the mill rate in Cumberland County. The school budget reflects needs that include less than 1% in actual school improvement. It's a very lean budget. It includes only three full-time positions, of which two are absolutely must be provided for to comply with special education needs by law. Regarding computers, these are essential learning tools. You know that. They are the textbooks of today. They will not be less expensive next year. Our IT director and the school staff have just spent two years doing the extensive research and analysis to determine the best options for our high school technology needs. It would be very difficult for average citizens to fully understand the complexities of this issue and the educational implications, since it just took us two years to really look at that. I urge you to let the school budget, as proposed, go to the voters. Thank you.
My name is Jody Shea. I am a parent of two children here in the school department. I live at 23 Windsor Pines Drive, and I'm also on the school board. I think I've covered everything. I'm here tonight to show you, not tell you about, but show you what high school students are currently learning from. I got my hands on a few textbooks. One of them is a biology book. The other is a global science book. This global science book is 10 years old. The biology book is 12 years old. And my favorite, the world history book, is 17 years old, older than most of the students in our high school. I decided to see how things have changed since these books were published. In the global science book, I looked up world population information. The book states our world population is 6 billion. When I went online, I used my device. I used my tool that I had. I found a website that tells me to the second what our world population is. Today, at 12:30, it was 7.3 billion, not the 6 billion this book mentions. This information is at my fingertips up to the minute. The website broke it down by country. I could have looked to see what the population change was in China at that moment. I could have done a lot more things. This tool that I was using, a laptop, helps me, the learner, dig deeper. The information I found was so much more in-depth and frankly, more accurate. Then I opened up the history book. Again, this is world history published in 1997. Keeping that in mind, let me tell you the things this book doesn't tell our students. The World Trade Center attack, September 11th, 2001, it's not in here. Hurricane Katrina in 2005, not in here. Water discovered on the moon in 2009. Since this book was published, Bill Clinton has finished his second term, George W. Bush has had two terms, and we've elected our first African-American president. None of that is in this book. British troops have withdrawn from Afghanistan, but you wouldn't even know there was a war in Afghanistan by reading this book. The one-to-one technology initiative does not just allow our students to Google something and find information, like I did today. It creates an environment of exploratory learning, which results in independent learners and thinkers. It opens up a global community. Our students have real-time access to resources that enhance their understanding of a topic. There's more opportunity to customize learning for the individual, and students can learn at the pace that works for them. The list of benefits goes on and on. This is a way that students learn today. They are a part of a digital world, and we need to make sure that we are providing an opportunity for them to be on an equal playing field with their peers. Laptops and technology, however scary that sounds to some of us, is the textbook of today. This is part of the learning that needs to happen in the year 2015. We are not breaking new ground here. We are not on the cutting edge of technology with this. We're the back end of that spear. So I will end, because I hear Jim Marie singing. As it stands now, I feel we are failing our students. If we don't provide tools that they need to learn in the 21st century, we are not providing an appropriate education. We fail as parents for not voicing our concerns. We fail as leaders in this town for not providing the necessary tools. And we fail as the community, because you better believe businesses will look elsewhere as families choose other towns to live in.
Evening. Chris Chiazzo, 17 Elmwood Avenue, and I think I'm rounding out the end of the school board's commentary, so I'll try and be brief. I'd like to start by thanking Councilor Baybine, Councilor Donovan, and Councilor Hayes for the extra time and efforts they each put into making our joint finance meetings a success. I believe we made great strides this year in improving communications between our two governing bodies and have moved the town's budget process forward in a much more positive, deliberate, and hopefully predictable manner. While I believe the process has been a positive one for both sides, it hasn't been without its challenges. We received, and perhaps the council has as well, a revised CIP proposal for our one-to-one computer request for the high school. Ordinarily, this would have been an ideal forum to discuss such an issue, especially considering the volatility among the townspeople surrounding this particular item in the school CIP budget. There were, however, two very critical issues with this that I found very challenging. First, in an attempt to shift costs away from the initial capital request, the proposal called for an annual fee to students of $100. I'm sure many of you outside the school system do not see a problem with this, but it does create some concerns for me personally. While I agree parents and/or students should be responsible for the costs associated with maintenance, which they are at the elementary and middle school levels, I think such a fee is inappropriate, because unlike sports, clubs, or parking, for that matter, which one could argue are elective, the laptops are an essential educational component, much like a textbook. Every student will be required to use the laptop without exception. There is no opt-out. This doesn't even begin to consider the complex policy and enforcement challenges such an arrangement would create. We moved to a pay-to-play system for athletics and activities in order to maintain good programs for our students while stretching our limited resources. This fee, in effect, would amount to a paradigm shift in public education, or what I may call pay-to-learn. Second, but perhaps most disturbing, was the fact that the proposal did not come from the school board or from the school administrators. It came from the town through the direction of the shared IT services model. There was no consultation, discussion, or notification to or by the school board that this revision was being explored, or that it was to be presented as a revised proposal in the joint format. The only reason for me mentioning this is to clear up any misconceptions that the council or the public may have regarding the one-to-one proposal, and remind the council of the clear separation of powers between the school board and the council. Unlike other town departments, by virtue of the town charter as well as state law, neither the council nor town administrators have line item authority over the school budget. In spite of the perceived breach of protocol, the school board and finance committee will take the suggested changes under advisement when we meet again tomorrow evening. It is my hope, moving forward, we will continue to be able to work together to come up with a mutually agreeable compromise that will allow this laptop initiative to move forward based on its merits and not on financial gimmicks. Finally, I'd like to leave you with some general thoughts as we once again consider making reductions to the proposed education budget. One very clear indication of a community's priorities is how they choose to spend their resources, however limited they may be. Sorry, I hear that. I'll try and wrap it up. As you know, Scarborough, like every municipality in Maine, is required to file an annual audit report with finances. These reports follow a consistent format across the state, and each town's report can be found on the state's website. In response to the continued cries from some that the education budget is out of control, I took last year's USA Today list of top 10 high schools in Maine and cross-referenced their towns with recent audit reports to see what percentage of expenses they dedicate to education. Falmouth, which was ranked number two, spends 65.7 cents of every dollar on education. Number three, Yarmouth, spent 65.6 cents. Number four, Cape, 65.7 cents. Number five, Kennebunk, 60.6 cents. And finally, Scarborough, which dropped from number seven the previous year to number 10 last year, spent 53.7 cents of every dollar on education. While admittedly, I only looked at one year's worth of audit data, we shared 20 years' worth of Scarborough school spending with the town finance committee, which clearly shows a consistent underfunding of education in Scarborough. So my hope, moving forward, as we continue to work together, is that eventually, as a community, we can begin to view our schools as the assets for growth, prosperity, and quality of life, much like our neighbors do, instead of burdensome tax liabilities like some in town want to portray them. Then maybe, instead of shifting the burden onto property tax increases or taxpaying parents through pay-to-play and now possibly pay-to-learn, we can work together, giving our future and our children a more equitable share of the existing pie.
Good evening. Mike Turick, 11 Bayberry Lane. I do not want to talk about laptops. I do want to talk about the school budget, though. And I feel like I'm pretty much alone here. There's a roomful of people here that I know support the school budget. Please hear me out, and don't throw any knives. Please do not allow the present school budget to go to the voters. There was quite a bit of time spent at the Joint Finance Committee presenting arguments to support the school budget. Argument one was that the 20-year trend for the school budget is acceptable. In my opinion, that's an old statistical trick, that if you don't like the present spikes in the graph, you run it back 20 years and the slope decreases. The only way to smooth out the jumps in the last three years is to go back. That's why it was done that way, in my opinion. Argument two, the CPI is not a good measure for determining the school budget. The CPI is something I thought of last year when I was announced as a write-in candidate for the school board. Because when that's combined with the rate of inflation and the rate of unemployment, you get a pretty good indication of what the economy's health is. That health is translatable to affordability, and affordability is what I'm talking about. We can afford budget hikes that come close to the CPI, or to the rate of inflation. That's why I chose that metric. In my opinion, again, we cannot afford increases that go above that. The third argument presented is that the school budget is not responsible for the rapid rise in taxes. The state is. Well, three or four years ago, the school budget was here and had a projected course that would take it up to take care of what was termed the Draculian cuts to the budget. At that time, state funding was here, and it's gone down. The figure that's used is 58%, so it's down over here now. What we have is a huge gap, and that is the affordability gap. And that's what's generated when the school funding from the state was reduced. To simply say we're going to continue on this course that takes the school budget up, in my opinion, is irresponsible to the rest of the town. Some gentleman mentioned that the town's made up of people, yeah, and some of them need a little relief here. Please don't take the 20-year graphs or the arguments that the state's responsible for the school budget. I sold a set of locks and doors today. I sold a set of locks and doors today. I heard it. It loes to a man and woman that are leaving town because of the taxes. He said, "I might as well leave now before I have to sign over my social security check to him." Thank you.
My name is Dick Springer. I live at Piper Shores, 15 Piper Road. I want to address issues that were partly mentioned by the previous speaker and by a couple of speakers in the general comment period. I think past history of costs is not relevant, that we should focus on current requirements and what our current needs are, and simply in dollar and cents terms, underfunding our school system is foolish, because the quality of our schools affects people's desire to live in this community, and that in turn affects property values. That's talking purely in terms of dollars and cents, not in terms of values. And I think the focus should be on what is required to have a high-quality school system that provides excellent education for students and is attractive to people with children so they want to live in this community. Now, the education, simply talking about economics and not other values, education has an economic value that is much greater for individuals than it's had in much of the past. Inequality is increasing in this country, and people without high-quality educations are doing more and more poorly economically. And economic, or good education is really the key to economic prosperity, and I think it's foolish to rob our children of the opportunities that a good school system provides. And we have to make choices. I think people may be stressed, some of them, and we should try to pressure the state to provide more revenue sharing, but I think we have to pay what it costs to provide excellent education for our children. And I think our property values depend on it, and the future of the country and the future of the people of Scarborough depends on it.
My name is Cindy Kierich, and I live at 6 Morris Point Road. There is a lot of people, a lot of reasons why people live in Scarborough. I think people will be here because of the beaches. I think we're really close to Portland, which is really attractive to a lot of people. The schools are excellent, and the mill rate is significantly lower than any of the other surrounding towns. When I moved here, I did not have children. I didn't have children for the first five years that I lived here, and the reason we chose Scarborough was because of all those things, plus because of the low mill rate. All of those things today still are in place, even though time has gone by. We do have a whole bunch of social strata in Scarborough. We have people with a lot of money, and we have people with not very much money. And we have a responsibility to take care of all of those citizens. We're going to use computers as an example. There are families who cannot afford to go out and buy their child a new laptop so that they can go through high school. It's just not in their budget. If you've ever lived on a tight budget, you know you can't find an extra $700 to do that for every single one of your children. We, as a town, have a responsibility to give them equal opportunity and equal chances. Our school board has consistently been fiscally responsible. Our cost per student is less than any other town in the surrounding areas, and we still provide an excellent education. So to imply that the budget that they're presenting is not responsible and conservative and taking into account the budgets of all people in the town, I think is really disingenuous. They really have tried to not put costs super high. Because of that, I think that we should present this budget to the voters. I understand that there are people, again, as I said, of all social strata in town, and I think there are people who need assistance. There's retirees who are on a fixed budget. Unfortunately, the only say we have is in the school budget, so that's where it always gets hammered. I think that there are issues that need to be addressed, but I don't think it's fair to take away from the school budget to try to fix other problems. Perhaps we can address those in other places. So I guess what I'm saying is that our school board has presented fiscally conservative budgets consistently over the years. Let's present this to the town, see what the voters say, and then we can go from there.
Drew Stevens, 6 Surrey Lane. First of all, I guess I'm only speaking once. I don't know if any other people are getting up again who spoke earlier, but I hope just because we speak once, it doesn't mean we believe any less in what we're saying than people who are speaking to you two or three times saying their opinions. I guess I've only been paying attention to what's going on in Scarborough for the last few years, and really this year, I've made even more of an effort to kind of come to all the meetings and hear what everyone has to say on the town council and the school board. And one thing that is a little bit concerning is it's turning into this big us-versus-them situation. And I don't think it's us-versus-them. I haven't heard anyone come up and say, "You know, I hate children, and I don't think they should learn." It's kind of silly that we're put in this little box to sit here and say, "We have to go through every line item of the school board." I think it's disrespectful to the school board that they sit there and spend countless hours putting together a budget to give the best school education to our children that they can, and then everyone who wants to can sit there and scrutinize every single line item and say, "Well, what about this? And why not this? And why are we buying this?" I think it would be crazy for us to sit here and tell the police chief, "Why do you need to do that? What do you need those uniforms for? What's the deal with this armor? Why do you need this?" It's silly for someone like myself to sit there and go through every line item on the police budget, or the fire department, or anywhere else. And that's what's happening with our school budget. And to be honest with you, if I was in a position where $20 more a month would really put a damper on my family, I might say no to the school budget the way it is, too, because it's the only chance I have to say no, not because I'm against the schools. So I really wish that this conversation can be broadened a little bit, so people who don't want to spend any more money can say no to something else. Maybe they don't like the granite beach signs, and they would say no to that instead of no computers for our children. The fact that we're arguing or discussing computers for our children is ludicrous. It's 2015. Who doesn't learn how to use a computer and expect to be competitive in anything? I don't care what you do. It's crazy that we're even having this discussion. Of course, we need computers for our children, and we can't ask every, the same people that are saying, "We don't have money to spend," we're going to ask those same people to go ahead and pay for a computer for their children? It doesn't make sense. So I guess I just would like us to start giving a little bit more weight to what the school board puts into this, and a little less weight to people who are going to say no to spending money because they can't spend more money, not because they're against the school board. And let's open up a chance for them in the future to maybe say no to something else besides just school budget. Thank you.
I'm from 14 Long Meadow Road, and I do have some questions around the laptops, because we've heard quite a bit that they're the new textbooks, so I would like to understand, are there savings associated with the laptops? And I did look at all the proposals, but hopefully there's something buried in there about that. I guess I am one of the morally reprehensible ones, because I can afford a laptop, and I would be happy to pay for it for my son, so that he wouldn't, we don't have to burden the taxpayers of Scarborough who can't afford that. And I certainly would want to supplement anyone who couldn't afford that. But I applauded the donor brick program, because I don't understand why we don't do more capital campaigns like that for things that we talk about. We've got to stop burdening people. Why don't we do more things like that? I was at the Yarmouth Sports Complex, and they have granite signs that say, "This was part of our capital campaign." I think those types of things would be great, and I think the great thing about the donor brick program was that it showed the taxpayers that there was an intent there, and I think we could do the same things around the laptops. I don't think that's a morally bad thing to do. I think it's a good thing to do. I don't understand the entire thing, I'm sure, but I do understand plain old words and plain old charters. It's over $400,000. Put it to a vote. Let's stop playing the games. It's capital. It's over 400. And when we do a fire truck, we'll buy this part or we'll buy that part, and we won't put it to a vote. That needs to stop. And I would urge you, and I applaud Councilor Baybine at the Q&amp;A session, where he said the council is considering a vote for both the town budget as well as the school budget. Because where I do agree with the previous speaker is that when people are upset about spending, they can only count, they can only register one vote, and I think that is a disservice to the school board. And I personally have a lot, a lot of questions on the line items. I know maybe people don't. As Drew just said, he doesn't. But I would like to know, how do I get those very specific answers so I can decide how I'm going to vote on those line items? That's what I would really like to understand. Maybe somebody can, you know, tell me how to do that. I won't ask them here tonight. I'll submit them in writing, because we don't have that kind of time tonight. But, you know, the main point I'd like to say is I really urge a vote on the laptops, and I urge a consideration with a public meeting to talk about the laptops and a capital campaign, and I urge the town to put the town budget to a vote as well. Thank you.
I'm Larry Hartwell, 9 Pierrot Drive. First of all, I'd like to say I support the laptops. I was at the joint budget meeting the other day, listened to the arguments and discussion on that, asked a couple of questions, and I'm four-square behind that. Everyone probably in this room has one, uses one. We know the utility of them, and so I think we need to do that. At that budget meeting, the school board committee asked the town's budget committee for specifics, recommendations on the school budget, and was told by the chair that by law, they can't do that, that they only look at the bottom line and not the details. And I just wanted, there'd been a remark earlier this evening about the impropriety or whatever you want to call it by the budget committee, so that happened there. Getting back to just dollars and cents, that's what the town council's all about, is the bottom line, not getting into the weeds of the school budget. If I was interested in the weeds, I'd go to the school budget committee in the school board and drown in the weeds. So I'm just looking at, again, a 20% increase over five years. Who has this kind of increase? We've kept the town budgets, the other departments, at 0% to 3%. We don't, as taxpayers, have the ability to pay this type of increase year in and year out. Thank you.
I'm Wally Fangler. I live 233 Holmes Road in Scarborough. I've been a resident here for 50 years, and my wife taught here for over 30 years. So before I get to what I wanted to talk about, I wanted to respond to some of the things that I heard tonight, that the computer is a textbook, and I understand that it's a tool, but it costs a lot more. And then I heard mention about that the textbooks were obsolete, that there was data that is current. My wife taught current events. She watched the news every night, and that's how her students learned the updated information. So I have a little bit of, I have a laptop, just like probably everybody does, or an iPad. But what's to keep them focused? They still need the teacher, and some of the problems, I think, is whether we keep the kids focused on learning. So I just wanted to make that comment. My main reason for coming up here is that my property taxes went up, I calculated over six years, it went up 25%, but I'll stick with the 20 that I've heard tonight. My retirement annuity went up 8.4% in that time period. So the total that my tax bill went up was $1,596 in that time period. I'm sorry, $1,926, and my income went up $1,596. So every year, I'm getting more and more squeezed, because everything else is going up as well. So I'm in favor of keeping the tax rate close to what the Consumer Price Index is, because my wife keeps telling me, "We got to sell our house and move out of town," and I don't think that's fair, after I've lived here for 50 years and supported education all that time. Thank you.
Robert Rovner, 4 King Street, Pine Point. I want to remind everybody that the town council doesn't tell the school board how to spend their money. The town council only votes on an amount that the school board is going to have to work with. I'm not one to be indirect at all, ever, and I don't know how to be that way. But I will tell you that I sat here tonight and listened to the majority of the people here, and everybody has blamed or lobbied the council for these laptops. I don't know how it got there. You're going to have to enlighten me, because this is not a town issue necessarily for you, as the governing board, to make this a capital improvement. This is an educational issue that the Board of Education should be working on to use as a their budget. Over $39 million last year in budget. They want a 12% increase. You're going up to $44 million. You're raising the CPI, I'm sorry, the mill rate up over 8% to every homeowner in this town. That includes all everybody on the board, and you think that when you ask somebody to pay $100 towards a computer, that that's not right, but you can raise their taxes. So if their home is worth $300,000, for every $300,000, the taxes are going up $383, do you think they would rather give out $100 for a computer or spend another $383 based on $300,000? If it's $600,000, they're up over $700 a year. I don't get it, and I don't get how the board here, I'm sorry, the council, got to the point of approving this as a capital improvement and putting it on the back of everybody here and not making this a school board issue within their budget. That's where it belongs. Thank you.
Kim Gammerdella, 6 Howard Lane. Thank you for having this meeting, giving us the opportunity to express our thoughts and feelings on the proposed budget. I also really appreciated the joint meeting last Wednesday as an opportunity to continue to be educated on the budget and the process. I moved to Maine five years ago from Pittsburgh. We chose Scarborough as a town to raise our family mainly because of the schools, and we love it here. We love this community. I have three kids, a first grader at Eight Corners, a fourth grader at Wentworth, and a sixth grader at the middle school. And unfortunately, I'm watching all three of my children have a different educational experience because of the reductions in programs over the last five years. It's disappointing that my kids won't all have the opportunity to have foreign language classes during their time at Wentworth, or play seventh grade middle school sports. I'm watching my youngest first grader's class size be 50% larger than my daughter's was just three years prior, and I'm concerned about things like the three primary schools having to share nurses. My first grader has a life-threatening food allergy, and yes, everyone at the school is trained, but as a mother who worries about that every single day, her child goes off to school, I want to know there's a full-time nurse there. God forbid he have any anaphylactic reaction during the school day. Our kids cannot afford to see any more reductions. We're underfunding our schools, so I support the school budget. I ask you to please support the school budget. We owe it to our kids to invest in them and education in our town. So in- to invest in them and education in our town. So in summary, please allow the budget as presented by the elected school board to go to voters on June 9. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paula O'Brien, Pondview Drive. I'm going to wing it because honest to God, my computer quit on me before I came, and I've not yet fit a personal desktop computer into my home budget yet. I've lived here in Scarborough for most of my life, and I'm a 1977 redskin graduate. I tell you this not to feel more privileged than newcomers in town, but because there are people that have been here for a long time, and these people will speak to me. They're afraid to speak for themselves because they are either too proud, or they will be considered anti-school, or worse yet, anti-children when nothing could be further from the truth. Some of them have felt comfortable speaking to me, and some of them have expressed that they cannot afford a huge increase beyond reasonable in their tax bill, and some of those include, yes, a mother of three who's hoping she can afford to stay here so that her last child can graduate. A retired man in his early 80s, still in his own home, already is talking of which medications he can give up because he doesn't want to discontinue cable TV because that is what he has to do all day. There's also three people who have had serious medical conditions in their family that's depleting their finances. There's 90-plus families whose children are provided backpacks at the beginning of the school year by Kiwanis because they cannot even afford those. There's also families helped with their oil bill each year by Project Grace graciously. I'm going to skip over to... I was also informed by a state representative that this million-dollar decrease in state funds is not yet set in stone. It was pointed out to me that while Scarborough may experience a million-dollar reduction, Westbrook, too, is looking at more than a million dollars in reduction. But when comparing Westbrook with our town, their school budget is only up $420,000 or 1.2%. Scarborough's is up 3.3 million or 7.6%. And let me mention debt. I'll bet most people don't even realize that Scarborough was paying over $6.3 million annually on debt service, and over $3.5 million of that is just interest alone. We may be near the bottom in the mill rate, but we are much higher in valuation than surrounding towns. In the end, something has to be done because next year and the year after that, it's not going to get any better. It's going to be the same thing, large tax increases. And whether it is a casino, much to the dismay of others, there are some that are looking at that. I've mentioned before that I feel that more 55-plus neighborhoods would be beneficial to Scarborough in that it doesn't provide more kids to the school at $12,000 each to educate, but it would provide more property taxes by huge amounts every year. I want to commend the Community Services Department for maintaining a nearly flat budget for years. And yes, while they have revenue, so does the town in tax dollars. They've maintained all the 22-plus school athletic fields and some snow removal and scheduling of fields, among other things, that are in their budget that are not in the school budget, like so many surrounding towns that are being compared to in the per-student cost. That number of per-student cost is actually higher here in Scarborough than what is being presented. So for the sake of many in town and who are in tough personal situations, I ask the town council to take a stand for those that cannot take much more of these huge increases and ask for more of a reasonable increase. Thank you.
Hello, Jennifer Carrion, 17 Scarborough Lane again. Oh, Scarborough Lane, my goodness, I'm a little bit tired today. Pumpkin Lane. And I'm here to actually talk a little bit about the textbook situation at Scarborough, as I've heard some other people bring up. They are really sadly out of date. I take AP Psychology, and our textbook was 12 years old. And if you think, in the terms of psychological advancements in the past 12 years, by the time we got our new textbooks, which are digital, by the way, and are very hard access without a laptop because the font can't be read on a phone, and there aren't enough computers to go around school for everyone to be able to access the textbook at the same time, it was astounding to me how what we were learning, what we were studying, day in and day out, what we were learning for homework, it wasn't right. That I had to relearn everything just to take the AP test on Monday, just so I could hope of getting a good score, and we needed these textbooks to be updated. And online textbooks, which we have, are a fraction in the cost. So in the long run, if we decided to replace physical textbooks with digital textbooks and a laptop, we would be saving so much money. And as a senior in high school, I sadly do not have the figures to support that because I'm 18. I don't have access to this kind of stuff. So just think about it. The world is changing, and we need to change along with it. What else can we do? Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this item of the hearing?
Good evening. My name's Chrissy Casio. I live at 10 Howard Lane, and I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but after listening to everyone here in the room tonight, I feel as though I would be doing my children a disservice if I did not speak tonight. I have two children. One is in fourth grade at the Wentworth School, and one is in seventh grade at the middle school here in Scarborough. We moved here about six years ago specifically for the schools, and we have, over the last few years, continued to have to fight for the funding and continued to see programs eliminated. And I can tell you, it is very discouraging for parents, and I cannot tell you the number of conversations that I have had over the past year with parents who are considering sending their children in this town to private school or considering moving out of this town. And it is such a shame because these teachers are doing such a great job with the minimal resources that they have available to them. So I urge you to please bring this proposed budget to vote so that we all have an opportunity to vote on this.
Again, if you do wish to speak on this item, please do just line right up at the podium.
Alex Maybry, 15 Bayberry Lane. I got here late, so I apologize if any of this is redundant. I just want to voice my support for the proposed school budget as is. And I think, you know, my partner and I moved here four years ago for same constellation of reasons that a lot of young families moved to Scarborough, which are the proximity to Portland, the outdoor amenities, and the good schools. Now, my partner and I actually have no interest in having children, have no interest in really utilizing the school system much, but I do understand what the value that the school adds to my house because I know how many of my friends are trying to find property in Scarborough, move to Scarborough as they start to have young families. So I think, you know, if we want to drive down the value of our houses, if we want to make Scarborough less competitive than Falmouth, Cape Elizabeth, Cumberland, South Portland, then we should continue to underfund our schools if we want to be less competitive. If we want to be more competitive and make sure that all of us get a very good deal someday when we sell our houses, and if we want a educated workforce for the future, not perpetuate cycles of poverty, then we have to fund public education, and it has to be a top priority. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, saying none, we will close the public hearing. Order number 15 dash 029 is a public hearing in action on a new request for a food handler's license from S and K Company LLC doing business as Jojo's Thai Kitchen located at 183 U.S. Route 1, Suite 8. Again, this is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this item in the pleasure of the council.
With approval.
And any discussion?
No.
And all right, saying none. No. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Order number 15 dash 030 is a 7:00 PM public hearing in action on a new request for a massage therapist license from Nancy J.
Sturdivant.
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 Thank you. Doing business at Focus Point Manual Therapies located at 7 Oak Hill, Paris. And again, this is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing in the pleasure of the council.
With approval.
Second.
And any discussion? All right, saying none. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Order number 15 dash 031 is 7:00 PM public hearing and joint meeting between the town council and the planning board on the proposed contract zone from Avesta to establish a 15-unit, a 50-unit affordable housing development at 577 U.S. Route 1. You know, I think we'll...
A quick recess while we...
Yeah, we'll break for five minutes and sewing to set up and then we can begin.
I had something different next.
We're breaking.
I had something different next.
I had something different next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm, like you said, I'm certainly going to introduce this and kind of go over the, the contract zoning process because it's not, um, you know, every meeting that you go through the contract zoning process, it's used sparingly in the community, so, um, it's worth kind of walking through the, the steps. Um, I also wanted to kind of mention that the timing of this application is, is pretty interesting as it relates to some of the council's goals. Um, you know, affordable housing is, is one of your goals for this year. Um, Housing Alliance has been working hard on that topic for a number of years. Uh, most recently, we passed historic preservation incentives with this particular property listed as a locally historic property, so that's certainly relevant. Um, and last fall, the town conducted a Dunston revitalization effort and study, uh, which very much included this area of the community and, and, and this is within the boundaries of that, that revitalization study and, and recommendations. Um, in terms of, in terms of process, this is proposed to be a contract zone because of, um, the uniqueness of the project and, and really, a contract zone would work best to kind of allow for some of the, the zoning implications that are, that are needed for this type of a project. Um, it's a, it's a deliberate and lengthy process, certainly, um, and it's designed that way. And it starts this evening with a joint meeting, um, of the town council and planning board. And, um, after a, a quick introduction, the applicant will go through their presentation. Um, and, um, by the end of the, the discussion, um, there's, there is an action expected of the council, and that is to, um, to give guidance to the applicant as to how to proceed. Um, you can recommend that they withdraw the project because there isn't support for the project, that's one step you could take. Um, another step would be to, uh, encourage them to continue, um, as proposed or with some modifications that you may identify this evening in your discussions. Or you can encourage them to revise their application if you think it needs some revisions, and then you can kind of re-conduct this, this joint meeting and, uh, with a more complete application or additional application materials. So the council has, and with input from the planning board, um, has that authority and, and you really want to be giving good guidance to the applicant because of the length of the process and the number of meetings that, that occur in the coming months. So after this evening, if you do give them the, kind of the green light and, and some encouragement, um, it goes to the planning board. The planning board conducts, um, really a preliminary site plan review. Um, that could take one meeting, it could take multiple meetings, and they need to issue a preliminary approval, um, before it comes back to you as the council. And then you would conduct your kind of more routine zoning amendment process, but focus on this contract zone. You'd have a first reading, you'd have a public hearing, and then a second reading, and then the, the final step would be final site plan review, development review by the planning board, and then they would move forward with construction if all that goes well. Um, so that really kind of lays out the process, um, and there's, for the benefit of the public, there's public hearings, um, throughout that process, both this evening, there should be time for public hearing. The planning board, through their preliminary review, includes a public hearing, and the council would also have a public hearing and, and your step in the process later on. Um, so, that really kind of lays out the, the, the timeline for the next coming months. Um, so, with that, I think the next step would be to have the applicant kind of go over their, uh, proposal to you and, um, and then go from there.
Good evening, Chair Holbrook, uh, and council members and chair fellow, fellows and planning board members. Uh, my name's Dana Tockman, and I'm the C E O of Avesta Housing, and we're excited to make this presentation tonight and, and excited to be working on this development. We haven't done a development before in Scarborough, so I'm going to provide some quick background on our organization, um, and then our team will, uh, present, uh, this application. Uh, with me tonight are Seth Parker and Kyle Ambler from, uh, Avesta Housing, uh, Dan Riley from, uh, our site engineer from Sebaggo Techniques, and Maggie Stanley and Rick Caduti, the architects. Uh, Avesta Housing was founded in nineteen seventy-two, um, when two community action agencies came together and created an organization to deal with affordable housing in Southern Maine. Uh, since then, um, we've created a number of developments, um, and, but none in, um, Scarborough to my knowledge. Uh, we've grown over the years. Today, we have about two thousand apartments in about seventy-five developments, uh, primarily in Southern Maine, a few scattered, um, in Northern, in Central Maine, and a few in New Hampshire. Uh, these seventy-five developments serve many different populations, seniors, workforce, some special needs populations. Uh, and we've worked closely with the communities in each case when these have been developed. Uh, in addition to our affordable rental housing, we also have an assisted living facility in Gorham, and we have a homeownership center in, um, uh, our offices in Portland. I want to just highlight, um, some of the activity we've done all around Scarborough, and, um, I think that helps, um, explain who we are. Uh, in Gorham, we have four existing affordable housing developments. We have a fifth one that will start construction this summer. Uh, most of those are adjacent to the U S M campus. In South Portland, um, we had four phases that were involved in, in the redevelopment of the main youth center. Uh, some of that was historic preservation, the old cottages, um, on that campus. Uh, in Saco, we have four affordable housing developments. Um, the newest one is just over the Scarborough-Saco line, that's Cascade Brooks that we did in partnership with Elliot Chamberlain. Um, in, uh, and I, and I want to mention a little bit about historic rehab. Uh, we have done probably eleven, uh, historic rehab developments. We've done old schools, we've done old houses, we've done old institutions, and, um, uh, sometimes these serve senior households, sometimes they serve families. Um, we did an, two old schools in Kennebunk, uh, in the last few years, one is for families, one is for elderly. We recently did an old school in, um, in, in Bitterfied. Um, last year, we did, uh, an old school in, in Westbrook that was a family housing. So we, historic rehabilitation is important to us. We like to preserve, uh, buildings that really contribute to a, um, town or city's character. Uh, and so, that's kind of what brings us here tonight. We are, um, looking at the old Southgate Farm. Um, we think it's a, a precious building, a, a precious site, and, um, one that frankly is in danger of being preserved because it is in, in some pretty significant disrepair. So, this development for us really is an opportunity to, um, fulfill three objectives, uh, two objectives and a third one that, that I think match up well with yours. Um, we do do affordable housing. Uh, we have about three thousand people on our waitlist looking for affordable housing, and we'll have about three hundred openings this coming year. I can't begin to tell you, frankly, how, how desperate the affordable housing challenge really is, and it doesn't really matter if you're, um, young or older or, or retired. Um, there are just long waiting lists and very few affordable options to, um, people that need them. So, um, this would help with that. Um, it also helps preserve this, this farm, and as I say, we love to do housing, uh, we love to preserve old buildings. They're difficult, but we like doing difficult projects. Um, and thirdly, we like to sometimes provide a little, uh, economic boost, uh, to an area. Certainly, the construction alone of our developments, um, create a lot of jobs and opportunity for local folks, but to get a little bit more momentum in that Dunston, um, neighborhood and, and bring some, uh, additional life to it, uh, we think this development would be, um, sort of an economic boost for the area. So we, we like, um, the opportunity in front of us. We think it's, it's a project that would, um, serve the community well and really fulfill some important needs. So I'll turn it over to Dan Riley, who will, um, uh, go from, from here and tell a little bit more about, about our plans. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dan Riley, I'm an engineer with Sebaggo Techniques, and we're the, uh, the site design landscape architect and surveyors of the project. Um, what I'd like to do tonight, or, at the beginning here, is to talk a little bit about the site, the overall concept for, for the site plan, um, and then have the architect talk about the building architecture and wrap up then with some of the, the items that the unique characteristics of the site, this site, um, require some relief through a contract zone with. Um, we do have our, our boards here, but we've, we've got everything that's on the boards, um, on, on display here to make it a little easier to see. Uh, the project site is the Southgate House property. Um, it's a, at five seventy-seven Route One. It's showed as tax map thirty-four on Lot Thirty-Seven. Um, it's a three acre site, um, as you see on, on the overhead there. Phillips Brook forms the boundary of what we're calling the, the, uh, the north end of the property. Um, it fronts with about a little over two hundred feet of frontage on Route One, and it's located in between the former Esbrooks Nursery and a antique dealership, or antique dealer building. Um, the predominant, uh, feature of the site is the Southgate House. Uh, it's a farmhouse that was built somewhere between, uh, seventeen ninety-eight and eighteen oh-five, um, with its attached extension. Um, there are two, um, significant, uh, historically significant barns that were constructed about the same era behind the building, um, that'll be preserved and incorporated into the site. The building's located in the Town and Village Center fringe zone. Um, it is right on the edge, on, on the graphic that you see there, the property to the south, the, uh, the antique dealership is in the Town and Village Centers District, and we're about, to give some scale, we're about eight hundred feet from, um, excuse me, from Payne Road and about twelve hundred feet from the intersection of Broad Turn Road on Route One. So the concept for the development is shown in the rendering there on the screen, and the important components are there is, um, first is the, the preservation and conversion of the Southgate Farmhouse, which is the building closest to Route One highlighted in white. Um, again, constructed in the early eighteen hundreds, it's currently, uh, utilized as seven apartment units, units. That building will be renovated and preserved, um, to, and converted into eight, uh, eight one-bedroom affordable housing units. The front porch in the building that you see in brown there may be retained, um, it's not part of the original eighteen hundreds construction and was, was added later, um, and that comes into play a little bit on one of the contract zone provisions. Behind the site, the two, the two smaller white buildings there labeled as barns are, uh, two of the barns that are slated to be preserved as part of the project, one of which may be connected to the building and reused as part of the, of the proposed facility. And behind it, um, the larger building that you see behind it with, that's labeled as new building construction, is the central portion of the project. It's a, it's a three and, three-story in the front, four-story in the rear, um, building, housing forty-two units that are currently broken out as, um, eight efficiency units, twenty-nine one-bedroom units and five two-bedroom units. Um, and as I said, with the conversion of the existing house from seven to eight units, it'll be a total of, uh, fifty affordable housing units on the site. So as part of the project, as, uh, as Dana did allude to, that we're planning to maintain and renovate the farmhouse and its extension in its current condition and restore it to its, its appearance from the, uh, early eighteen hundreds. Um, the proposal is to preserve and relocate slightly the barn immediately behind it. Um, in order to reuse that barn, uh, for use of the community, a foundation has to be constructed, and as part of the project, we would relocate that building somewhat towards, towards the front of the site. And the third barn in the rear would be preserved on site, but due to its condition and the cost of renovation, it's likely not to be incorporated into the project, but it would be preserved and maintained in place for its historic importance. Uh, there are two, um, other twentieth century structures, uh, outbuildings that are sort of in the middle of the site where the parking lot is proposed that are, are, um, likely to be, will be removed as part of the project. Um, as we'll get into with the, the building architecture and with some of the provisions of the contract zone, um, some of the constraints on the site to preserve that building really dictate the placement of the new structure. Um, there is a shoreline zone associated with Phillips Brook that extends two hundred fifty feet up onto the property from the edge of the wetlands there, and the majority of that building in the, in the end of the parking lot at the north end of the site is within that. We've designed the facility and the site to respond to that, uh, we're meeting the requirements of the shoreline zone in that area. But those constraints in constructing the new facility while preserving the existing buildings that are in the middle of the site dictate the site layout and really dictate, uh, a number of the provisions that we're looking for, uh, through the contract zone. The remainder of the, of the site development that we've developed on the plan you see there is, um, surface parking for the residents. Um, currently, uh, we're proposing fifty parking spaces in the area that's marked in gray on the site. Uh, it's alongside the building where some of the existing, uh, parking is, is located today. Um, that's one item that we'll be talking about in the contract zone. The, the underlying zoning requires fifty-five spaces, we're currently showing fifty or one per unit, um, based on information that Avesta has from their other projects of the actual parking demand of their facilities. Um, and there may be some space remaining, uh, within the constraints of the shoreline zone to expand that somewhat to get very close to what the requirements are. Um, the other features of the site development really are the, are landscaping around each of the buildings. There'll be pedestrian connections and sidewalks throughout the facility and connecting into the sidewalks along Route One, and some storm, a stormwater management facility, really a grassed, um, underdrained soil filter at the rear of the building to address the stormwater, um, that's going to be generated from the project. Um, we will require a, a permit from, uh, the Maine Department of Environmental Protection as part of the planning board process. Um, I'll move through here. So, I, I, we've provided a few pictures of, of the site, um, as it stands historically and what it looks like today to give a little bit of, of context. Um, this is a picture of the building sort of from the southwest, um, of the building around the time of its construction in the early eighteen hundreds. The photograph isn't dated. Some pictures of the building as it looks today, looking ahead from Route One or, and looking slightly from the east across, uh, from Route One, looking back at the, the farmhouse that'll be preserved. Um, the existing brick structure was the original, as you saw in the historic photos, the, the existing original facade of the building, and, um, there's evaluations being done now as to whether the, the porch that was added later will be retained as part of the project or removed. Again, some other, a couple other shots, again, from, looking from the south and, and west, um, this side of the building, you can see the, the existing farmhouse with its extension to the rear, and then the two barns that you see in the lower photo are, uh, the barn on the, on the right is slated to be, uh, supported by a new foundation and relocated and connected to the new building, uh, potentially for use as community space or at a minimum preserved, and the, the barn to the left, um, will remain at its existing location and, and simply be preserved for, uh, preservation reasons but not reused.
Maggie Stanley from Caduti Thomas Architects. Dan kind of struck on the historic aspect already of the main buildings here. Oh, okay. There I am. Um, and I just want to talk about the new construction in the back. Because of the historic nature of this project, the primary focus from the street and from the view that the National Park Service will be concerned with is the preservation of the main building. Um, given that fact, the, our new construction can't overpower and take away from that grandeur of the historic nature of the building. So we've used the size of the site and the, and the, um, and the slope that the site provides to try to make that, our new construction blend as well as it can with a historic building and take up as little of the, um, emphasis from the street view and the side view, uh, of the main building. In this rendering here, you can see that although it's a three-story building, we've incorporated, uh, dormers for the top story, which would be the efficiency apartments that are set back from the main, from the front facade, and that will help, um, keep the height of the building down and the overall massing at a minimal. building down and the overall massing at a minimal. In the back, and here's a closer view of it, in the top ridge line of that is consistent through, and so the back of the building, we get four stories, but the ridge line stays the same, so you don't see an increase in height. And that is moving further away from the street, so as your perspective from a distance, it becomes even less noticeable. The overall massing of the building itself is to sit with the historic nature of the barns. It becomes, it starts to sit with the barns with like a shed off to the sides there where the entrances are. So, it's a very historic vernacular there that will blend with the rest of the property as being, you know, farmhouse with the back buildings as a barn structure. There may be some modern elements as we work on the entrances. You can start to see we suggest that, but that will be worked out when we work with the community space of the existing barn and the new entrances there, all in keeping with the historic, complementing the historic nature. And I just show you here the elevation straight on. You can see on the top elevation there, that's the east elevation. So, you can see that grade change from the front of the building to the back of it where you keep, you have the two dormers at the top where the efficiencies would be, and you keep the same ridge line all the way through, but gaining that extra story for the extra apartments needed to suffice here. On the front elevation, you can see how the, the lower elevation, you'll see the barns next to it. The existing barn is a small building on the left and the shape of the building itself. Although, straight on, it does look much larger. When you look at the renderings, you can see how it actually doesn't, it doesn't overtake the historic nature. And that's kind of the gist of where we are right now for architectural, for the massing of the building.
The last item I wanted to cover before we opened it up for questions is to talk a little bit about the contract zone provisions and what some of the requirements are due to the, due to the unique characteristics of the site. Sorry, I put my notes down. There you go. I don't want to make, I want to make sure I don't, we don't miss anything. So, the, in the contract zone application, we did talk about a number of provisions that we're seeking adjustments to the underlying zoning to accommodate the features of the site. And it's really driven by the historic preservation, the location of the existing buildings sort of dictate the location of where the new building needs to be relocated. Its scale and mass is really necessary to keep the affordable cost of the project down and meet the state guidelines. And so, you'll see as you read through the application and as we talk about this, the provisions are generally related around the density of the project, number of units allowed, and then some related to the scale of the building and parking that's associated with it. So, the provisions that are outlined and requested, first, it relates to the use. The TVC3 Zone allows multiplex units but limits their size to 12 units in a single building. This project, as we said, proposes a 42-unit building. These are 100% affordable units. They're smaller than your typical market rate units and can never be converted to market rate units. The second item related to the use of the property is the setbacks. The underlying zoning has, requires a minimum of 25-foot setback from Route 1 and a maximum of 75 feet. The existing farmhouse building's porch is about 77 feet, so that building is nonconforming from that standpoint. The porch may be removed to restore the historic facade of the building, which will, again, which will increase that nonconformity of the existing building. And then simply due to the location of that building and the need to preserve the existing structures, the new building will clearly be set back beyond the maximum setback. So, we're looking for some adjustment to the zoning to allow that to occur. The second item for the contract zone relates to the residential density. The project is about three acres in sight. When we apply the affordable housing provisions of the ordinance and the historic preservation credits, doing that net residential calculation results in 24.4, rounded down to 24, units would be allowed in the current zoning. Due to the size of the project and applying the same affordable housing provisions allowed in the ordinance, the proposed building would result in 30 units from a density calculation standpoint. So, we're looking for adjustment in the contract zone to go from essentially 24 and 1/2 units allowed to 29 and 1/3 units allowed, so about six units of additional density is what we're asking for. A second item of the zoning relates to the building coverage. The zoning allows for multiplex buildings with up to 10,000 square feet of footprint space on the property, in it, for an individual building, excuse me. The current building as it's shown and presented in the application is about 9,830 square feet, so the new proposed building meets the requirements. However, we are proposing and wish to connect that building to the existing barns. So, when you add the footprint of the barn to the footprint of the new building, we're more than 10,000 square feet, but we're less than 12,000 square feet, which is another limit that's allowed for other uses in that zone. So, we'll be requesting some additional building footprint, understanding that it's due to the fact that we're connecting to the existing structure. The other item relates to building height, and as, in the application, we described this, but it's not clear that whether we need relief in the contract zone. We need an interpretation from the code enforcement officer on this. The building height requirements in the zone allow for three stories or 45 feet of height, and the ordinance defines that height at the front of the building. So, project as it's presented today, if the elevation facing Route 1 is considered the front of the building, we meet that height requirement. As Maggie pointed out, and you can see in the elevations that, and probably more effectively in the, in the site concept, the building is segmented. The forward portion of the building is three stories tall from grade and with a building height that meets the requirements and the number of zone, excuse me, floors allowed by the zoning. The building steps down a level, so there's a fourth floor adds to the rear of the site, but that steps down below the parking lot grade and steps back away from, towards the sideline, sort of mimicking the pattern of the existing barns on the property and hiding that fourth floor. So, measured at the rear of the building or on the east elevation, will be four stories tall, but it appears that we are still going to meet the height requirements of the ordinance. So, depending on how the code enforcement interprets the front of the building, the final contract zone may request an additional fourth story if this is considered the front of the building. And then finally, the other provisions of the contract zone, again, are related to the parking ratios and required parking on the site. Based on the mix of units and the number proposed under the underlying zoning, 55 parking spaces are required. The plan that you see tonight shows 50 parking spaces. It is possible that we can add another three spaces in that, in that end of the site that's within the shoreline zone and still remain within the limitations of the shoreline zone, but we have to work through some of the final design of the property. The shoreline zone portion were restricted to impervious area of 20% of that area, and we are within that and will stay within that, but we have some leeway that we may be able to add some additional parking spaces. So, but we are including in the contract zone a request to reduce the parking ratio for the project to one, one space per unit regardless of the unit size. Avesta, as we go through the planning board process, Avesta has information from their other developments that supports the fact that their population generally does not have as many vehicles as, as a typical underlying zoning might require. And then finally, the final provision that we discussed in the application and maybe more of a planning board discussion rather than a contract zone provision is the location of the parking. The design guidelines for the TVC3 Zone encourage parking to be located to the side and rear of buildings, particularly when those buildings are set back from, away from Route 1. The zoning does allow parking across the front of buildings in that front setback, a single row, which we are opting not to do because of the historic nature of the building. But we are going to be requesting that the parking be allowed to be constructed as it's shown today where the parking is forward of the building line but to the side. It's not, doesn't fit neatly into the design guidelines that are in the ordinance, but that's something we'll be discussing with the, with the planning board going forward. But in order to meet those parking requirements while preserving the existing buildings and the appearance of those buildings from the street and reacting to the, to the shoreline zone really necessitates that construction, which also mimics, maintains some of the parking that's there today. So, with that, that sort of summarizes where we are with the application and the provisions we'll be looking for in the contract zone, and we're certainly all here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. So, we need to have, we need public comment, correct? So, before we dive into our conversation, it is a public hearing, so is there anybody that wishes to speak from the public on this item? All right. And saying no, no, I'll close the public comment. So, question? Anybody have any questions? Or no? And, there's a joint.
Yes, I'll start on behalf of the planning board. Question to the applicant, you made a couple references to the National Park Service and that process and the start preservation. Could you give us a little background on where, where the site stands regarding to that process? Are you, Part 1 or 2, or is that in process and generally where that stands?
Depends on what the anticipated timing is.
Wait till you go to the mic, sorry.
Hi. My name's Rick Caduody, Caduody Thomas Architects. The Part 1 process is in, is in the process of application finished and being submitted. I think there's a 30-day review period before we actually get the answer back, but we're, we have a historic consultant from Massachusetts who's working on it. She's assured us that the Part 1 will be coming. And as part of the Part 1, everything that we've done and everything that we're sort of questioning about the site is being reviewed by her, and we haven't made any assumptions without her involvement and her agreement as to how we're approaching it. We had quite a bit of discussion about the viability of the two barns, the two barns that we're saving. They're really not, they, anybody would say that you would be better off taking them down and rebuilding them, but she wants them to be reconstructed with the materials that are there so long as it's not rotten. So, we've incorporated that into the, into the Part 1 approval process. That question about the front of the existing house and the screen and porch or the open porch with the, with the enclosed glass is a question of whether or not we can leave that or take it down, and that depends on how the park service determines the period of most significance, prior to when that was added or after. I think we're all of the opinion that we'd like to take it down because we, as you, what we really like is that image that we saw before. And it's a handsome building either way, but we think it's more handsome with the, with the front piece off. So, the pieces that we know we have to deal with are the house and the surround, the porch surround, the two barns, the other two pieces we're taking off are disappearing. And we have, with what we do new, we have to reflect a character that's not necessarily mimicking what was there before, but reflecting how something today might be built with respect to what was built before and how we can combine our materials and our shapes. And that's what we've tried to do. So, that's where we are.
If this goes forward with the planning board, we'll obviously have the opportunity to do a full site number review and get into a lot more detail on the site planning and all of it.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
There's reference to the design standards and the fact that we generally do like to create the parking work to the back, and I think we also kind of like to see actually more massing toward the street. I understand the issue with the historic process, because you maybe elaborate a little bit, you know, I don't want to belabor it, but maybe elaborate a little bit on what's driving that from the historic perspective. I understand that you need to have sort of, the new structure needs to be complementary and not overwhelming, but how much of the driver is that?
It's, it's a significant driver, but there's several things that drive it. One is, is that if we put the new building next to the existing house, the scale and the mass and the relationship of that building, which we're calling the barn, so to speak, would be inconsistent with way farmhouses usually are presented to the street, house, connector, barn. And so, we're trying to respect that aspect of it, and that we're trying to respect the space around the existing house that sets that building almost up on a pedestal. If we put our building next to it, it's going to sort of push down on that, on our existing building. So, we felt that setting the building behind was appropriate from maintaining the grandeur of the existing house and also respecting the relationship of the barn to the house in a traditional sense. And then, the next thing we had to do is we felt that the scale of the barn needed to be very carefully sized appropriately as it, as one would imagine a barn might be 100 years old in relation to its house. And we were very careful not to oversize the building or to let the scale of the building or the massing of the building get to a point where we were, where it was sort of dominating the house. So, we've kept the height of the building. I think it's, the height of the building is almost, the height, the ridge of the new building is almost the same height as the, of the, of the hipped roof on the main house. And from the street, by perspective, you can't even really see the building behind it. If you go off to the side, you can. Actually, if you go off to the east side, you can. If you go off to the west side, you can't. So, we were very careful to integrate our new building with the old barn as it steps up and with the house and not feeling as though behind, you know, behind this house that's so nice, there's this big building looming over it. And I don't think we have any of that, and I, I hope that our photographs show that. Did I answer it? We're already, to answer your, the Part 2 comes in two parts really, and we've already identified all the significant pieces that we know that we have to address as part of the Part 2. We don't have all the answers, but that's already in, are sort of already in process, and those are all not ifs, they're all whens and hows.
Oh. Does anybody have any, any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering what the range of size of the units are, square footage of the individual units.
350 approximately, 712.
350 to 712?
Yep. So, one, it's a, the 350 is a studio and the 712 is the, just more.
Seven, the 712 is two-bedroom.
So, I apologize if this is a kind of a trivial question. So, while it's low income, is there, for Avesta, is there age eligibility requirements that you, you know, is it open to anybody who has an income restriction or income?
It would be open to any age, I think must be at least 18, but, but no upper limit. And the, the income range that we're targeting, I believe, is about $27,000 to around $43,000, which is how the housing tax credit targeting works. Did I get that right, Kyle? 27 to 43,000?
Thank you.
Could you talk a little bit about, on that thought of, you know, how, how much, could you talk a little bit about the, you know, the Avesta and its kind of dynamic of how that plays with main state housing and, and, you know, how you can arrive to certain rents and certain thresholds and how that, some of that work?
Yes, I can, and I'll do my best to not get into some bureaucratic language here because it's, it's, the regulators have a fierce effect on what it is we try to do. The Main State Housing Authority distributes tax credits each year to about five, six, or seven developments from around the state that compete, and it's quite competitive. And to compete, you, you need to commit to having the target, all of the units have to serve people at 60% or less of the median income. And then you get some extra points depending on if you have some 50%, people at 50% of median income. So, we have the two layers of, of income targeting in there to basically help us get enough points to compete. And they want to emphasize, it's very competitive. Every developer knows what they're going to have to do, and every little point counts. So, ultimately, they figure out how much rental income do you need to pay for your expenses, and it has to be within the IRS guidelines, which say, dictate the 60.
And it has to be within the IRS guidelines, which say dictate the sixty and fifty percent income, incomes. Does that help?
The other thing, Karen, I wanted to ask, a question around, we've talked about in other projects, the scoring and, you know, where you feel that this project might score comparable to other, other projects, wouldn't you say, housing?
We think this is competitive. We think there are a number of factors that affect our score. The overall cost per unit, per apartment, is an important number we want to achieve. And to achieve that number, that's how we sort of arrived, that's one of the things that drove the size of this. That and the need to spread all of our infrastructure costs out as many units as possible. So, the cost per unit is a key factor. Having planning board approval and having, is it the thirty or the forty-five day?
Appeal period.
Appeal period exhausted, at the time we apply, is worth, I think, ten points. Being close to certain services, like a store or a gas station or a church or things, you get so many points for that. This is a good site, and it is, because of the complementary businesses at Dunston Corner, it scores, scores well. The, let me think, what else? Our commitment to preserve it for a long period of time. But planning board and approval and cost and the proximity to services are really what usually distinguish the winners from the losers, if you will. Those are the kind of the key items. And so we've scored this based upon what we assume Main State Housing Authority's scoring criteria is going to be. They have told us it'll be the same as it was last year, so we think we know, but it's not official. And so that's our plan. The applications are due in late September, and so this is on a fairly tight timeframe. But it's a project we're really excited about. And so we've invested in this in a big way because we think it's a worthy project.
Just if I could on that point, Mr. Wood asked me to set up for tonight, and really the timing of this has everything to do with what Dana just described. Needing to have planning board approval and the appeal period exhausted before, earlier mid-September, Dan laid out the process, and they'll have to push very hard, given some of the additional historic preservation hurdles that they, that they'll have before them to get through that process and have a fighting chance of making the application in September. So, to accommodate that, those needs of the schedule, we've kind of shoehorned this into this meeting agenda. So I apologize for any inconvenience that may have caused members of the planning board or council, but that's really why it has happened the way it has.
I just have a quick question, and if I heard you correctly, these will never go to market rate, so to speak, they will always stay as affordable housing, is that correct?
In, yes, we need to commit to Main State Housing Authority that they'll be affordable for ninety-nine years.
Okay.
I can't guarantee the hundreds, but I'll-
Right. But it's not like some of the HUD deals that it's twenty-five or whatever, yeah?
It's not the fifteen years or twenty or whatever, it's ninety-nine years is the commitment we make to these, which is a long time.
Yeah.
Just, look quick, I'm looking forward to getting to the reasons, planning board members certainly. And the preservation of all that you talked about is truly exciting.
Can't think of a more interesting property in the Dunston area to see a transformation such as this. You haven't spoken about preservation of the landscape, particularly mature trees on the site. Is that something you've looked at at all at this point?
I'll turn it over to one of the technical experts here. It's certainly, it's important, so we'll do everything we can.
Yes, I, I alluded to the fact that it's not just the building, it's the building and the site that will be evaluated by the park service. And I explained all the reasons why we located the building the way we did. And the landscape is important because it sets a stage for the building. So we've attempted to reflect that, and it was in a way to address, I can't remember your name, but we want to know why we weren't putting a building up front. We didn't put the building up front because as a landscape element, it would compete with the building and the traditional, original landscape of the site. So, we've, we've tried to locate the building in a way that, from all views of the existing house and of the barns, there's a quality that, in the view, that is there, that is going to be there, that was there. And that the trees, the only trees that we have to take down are the trees that are in trouble. Except for out at the back of the building, on the four-story, there's probably, I don't know, seven or eight trees or ten trees we might have to take down there. But we don't think that that's really a significant impact on the overall character of the landscape. So, the landscape as we see it is the large majestic trees with a lawn, a lawn surrounding the building. And that's what we're attempting to maintain and, and support.
Any other questions, or we can go on to the how we feel round if we'd like? So, yeah, Bill?
Can we get a clarification perhaps from the town manager as to the order itself? And the, it appears there were three options?
Yes, we laid out, this is actually, looked at directly out of the zoning ordinance. So we've lifted the three options that are available to the town council this evening, not wanting to presuppose what you might do. We've laid them all out there for you, so you'll, you'll have to select one of them. That, that helps the question?
Can you explain what the three, three options represent?
I could, but I think Dan Bacon could explain it much better.
Boy, that was good.
By a vote, advise the applicant to, number one, to withdraw the request of, draw the request for contract zoning, that's one option. Number two is to continue to process the request for contract zoning with or without modifications suggested by the council. Say this evening you have modifications you suggest, you could include those. Or three, to revise and re-semit the application for contract zoning under that particular section of the ordinance. So that, that option would suggest that you think that the submission isn't complete, or it needs some additional material, and then you have this meeting again and then reconsider it. So, one is to advise that we're not in support, one says move forward and, and good luck, and three is come back with an updated application and we'll think about it again.
Thank you.
So, that would be a motion for the first and the second to one of the three options. So, anybody have any other questions about the process of how we can move forward? Anybody want to? I have lots of great feelings and thoughts that I want to share, but, does anybody else?
A procedural question, so I am in favor of option number two. The question is whether it's with or without modifications, and procedurally, I want to make sure I do the right one. I'm in favor of this continuing forward, and if I understand it correctly, it would be with modifications as presented by the applicant, correct? It's like, there's like a part of the sentence that's missing, and it's, which modification said the applicant has submitted in this, in this proposal? Or is it modifications that we have to come up with and suggest?
It's the latter, it's modifications you would suggest that they consider.
Okay. So I would move approval that we allow, and I don't have it in front of me, but approval that we would continue the process to request for contract zoning without modifications.
I would second that.
And, so now we can have discussions. So, you know, actually, I think you hold that for one second before we get on the debate of whether to move it. I did just wanted to hear, if there was any additional feedback from the planning board about any suggestions about modifications, or if there's anything that, you know, your role is really kind of stood out to you, or?
Nothing stands out to me as far as what your role might be as far as how it fits in the contract zone ordinance. I'm eager to dive into the site plan details, you know, but I think that's, that's after you folks wishing, you know, allow us to see it another day.
Similarly, I, excuse me, I don't see anything that would, I would see as a threshold issue, and there will surely be modifications within the context of the planning board's review if that goes forward typically are, but I, I think it's got a lot of promise and-
When I first heard about this, I was pretty excited because I think it solves a lot of issues we have in town. And then when I heard the presentation, I was, you know, more pleased. So I think we should do everything we can to make this work. That's my conclusion.
Well, thank you very much for your, for your input and feedback. So now I'm going to drop back into our first, in a second, on the, which is my first contract zone that I had to run, so bear with me. So discussion.
So, I believe this actually achieves, even with the modifications that they're requesting, achieves many objectives. Not only affordable housing, but the bigger picture is really long-range and vision planning regarding the Dunston, what I would call Dunston redevelopment, and this could be the catalyst based upon what I'm seeing. And I do, you know, believe that the planning board will delve eagerly into all of the details and make a proper recommendation and proposal for us. So I'm very happy with what I've heard and seen and hope this moves forward.
I was very impressed by the professionalism of the presentation and the materials that were submitted. I particularly liked the way in which you were attempting to integrate a new structure visually from the street, from the public area of the street to disguise a forty-two unit building. I think that's, that's an excellent idea. The historic preservation to me is wonderful and second only to getting affordable housing. So I don't know which one I'd be more excited about, but they're both, these are terrific. So I would strongly support the motion.
I also support this motion. As a real estate professional, I know of the lack of affordable housing in this area, in particular in Scarborough. So I'm thrilled that we will be creating that many units of affordable housing for folks in Scarborough. And I also believe that communities benefit from great diversity. So bringing in this more diverse population can only be good for Scarborough.
I think it's a wonderful project. I do have a couple of concerns. I don't think you have nearly as many parking spaces as you would. I think you have fifty units, fifteen, I don't think that's really, and also, I'm a little bit concerned about the entrance and exit. It's all off to Route One. Looks like you're pretty kind of here, especially in rush hour of the morning and the afternoon. It's all right if you go, and if you take a right, if you take a left, it's not so difficult. But I like the body, I like the fact that it's very, very low impact on the school system, but it ain't impacting all.
Do you have anything you want to add?
My colleague's already said, they work, thank you.
Well, I'll just chime in. I can't imagine why, for a great effort, for a total effort. So I do just want to comment about the absolutely outstanding and thorough job, not that I've had the opportunity to deal with a ton of contract zones, but certainly this is very detailed and well thought out and well laid, planned and proposed. And just for the benefit of the folks at home, some of the interesting, more interesting notes about this property is it does certainly have, it's on our historic, doesn't make, you know, it does recently designated historic building list. It's also a connection to the King family, which is, you know, deeply rooted in here in Maine history. And we call it the Southgate House, it's also reflects that type of kings. And the one other interesting, I might want to point out, because I didn't, the only thing I didn't see in this very thorough review was the meteor that sits in the front of that property just off to the, to the side, was the TNT place. So it's just as a key feature, that that's important, not every day we have a boulder that's actually a meteor from outer space. So, yeah, we had to have a nice cool being.
All right, so, well, we went down, all those in favor of the contract? Well, thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Should we put it?
Not there, in one of their fields when they dropped.
Cool. That's cool.
All right, we'll go ahead and start our march forward with the remainder of our evening. We have no old business at this time, so new business is order number fifteen dash zero three two, which is act on the request from the town manager to proceed with the recommendations brought forward to the town council on tax-acquired property pursuant to the policy for disposition of tax-acquired property.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This is the first time I've gone through this process, so bear with me. I have prepared memorandum, and the order is kind of curiously devoid of detail, but I assure you my memo would be part of the official minutes, so this will follow, as will the spreadsheet that it relates to. Following the policy the council created and most recently updated, I have solicited input from the required departments and various boards and commissions. And to my surprise, Dan Bacon was the only one that provided substantive comment of all those groups. And I want to flag that because he's made recommendations for preservation or to keep at least parts of two certain properties, and I've made recommendations contrary to his suggestion. He and I've talked about it, it's not a deal breaker, but I just wanted to make that aware to the council. So if you bear with me, I think it's, I'll just run down through my list of recommendations, and this is based on the twenty-six properties that we currently have in this category of tax-acquired property. Worth noting for the public perhaps, some of them date from nineteen fifty-seven, so this is not, these aren't all recent occurrences, this is a backlog, and we're trying to clean it up. So I'm going to reference the numbers on the spreadsheet rather than parcel ID numbers. So I recommend that for parcels one, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, they be retained for a town property. Essentially, all of the properties in that category, in my estimation, have very limited monetary value, are not developable, but actually have high natural resource value. So I think they're good things for us to keep. For parcels two, three, four, five, six, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, based on staff input, we see no purpose to hold on to these as public property. And I propose that we go through an open competitive process to sell those properties. As a footnote, I suspect, because most, if not all of them are undevelopable in their own right, they don't have terrible, great market value, we'll make extra effort to communicate with the butters, as they may well be the most interested parties to pick up those parcels. For parcel sixteen, I have been successful in making initial contact with the prior owner who's interested in an installment sales contract, so- For parcel seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one, in these cases, prior owners have been very actively engaged with my office. In fact, one of them made an appearance before the council last fall, expressing interest in reacquiring the property. In these three cases, they are not primary residences, so they're not candidates for the sales installment approach, but they are candidates for the one-time redemption approach. And that's what I propose we do for those three parcels. Incidentally, two of those three are, two of the parcels Dan Bacon mentioned has some natural resource value as it relates to Red Brook and that watershed. Moving along, parcel twenty-five, that was under contract. Unfortunately, the prior owner failed to meet all the terms of the contract and was fallen out. I propose that we move forward with the redemption approach. And I've had communications with the prior owner in that regard, and they are interested. And then just housekeeping for parcels twenty-two, three, and four, they're all in good standing under current installment, installment sales contracts, so no further actions required. I just mentioned that. And lastly, parcel twenty-six is currently in bankruptcy and advised to let that run its course before we do anything with it. So with that, that constitutes my recommendation to move these matters forward.
All right, and before we get too far, now that that's been introduced, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? None?
Who approval?
Second.
And discussion.
I didn't see, and maybe it's been presented before, the copy of the actual policy. I, I agree with every single one of these, but I do have a question regarding the first item that's in the recommendation, which is based upon the relatively small monetary value. The question I have is, what is the relatively small value in the sense of what's the threshold going forward? I mean, is it a thousand bucks? Is it less than five? I mean, what, what are we going to be using as a guideline? I didn't see it, I didn't see it in there. And I apologize.
Yeah, the guideline doesn't give any guidance in that regard. I use that as a, I use that as a partial rationale as to, as to why we should retain it. There's not much value that we would reap. Based on the last assessed value of these properties, they range from five hundred dollars to two, to ten thousand. And I honestly don't, you know, I don't have a great degree of confidence that those numbers are, they're certainly not appraisals or market numbers. If we retain them, we can always revisit this and choose to sell them in the future as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, sort of a related, sort of a related question. For the properties that we think we're going to offer for public sale, does it any sense of might occur this year, so what kind of revenue flow that might be? Is it?
I've not done that financial analysis. I fully intend to advance that this year. I believe I will be bringing those back. Incidentally, the council will approve all of those sales individually. I fully expect to return that to you in this calendar year. I don't have an estimate of what that might bring.
Just, just looking for that, that extra.
I know.
It's, it's the season, so.
And, and we, we all? All right, and well, first and the second, so all those in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thanks so much.
And order number fifteen dash zero three three, act on the request to set the date, time, and location of the school budget validation referendum for Tuesday, June ninth, twenty fifteen. And anybody wish to speak on this matter? And the none, I will pause comment and put it over the council.
Move of approval.
Second.
And discussion.
Is it the point in the procedure that I introduce an amendment, or is that, is that later? I guess I would like to at least consider introducing an amendment suggesting that the following language could be added. The following is a non-binding expression of opinion for the consideration of the town council and school board advisory question. That would be, do you favor the acquisition of laptops by the Scarborough School Department for high school students at an initial cost not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
All right, and that was in the form of a motion, so is there a second?
Second.
And discussion.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, for me, this is, this is not about whether the laptops are a good idea or a bad decide, idea. It's really about who should decide. And actually, I'm kind of still on the fence about it. But really, the thought was, and you certainly heard it from some of the, some of the comments tonight, and I've heard, actually, I've gotten a lot of emails this year about the school budget, and the overwhelming, almost every single email has been, let the voters decide. And this, to me, is kind of an issue, this should be an issue that the voters decide. It really should not be a council decision. I, I think we should really do it. I think there is a spirit in the charter that these type of expenditures by the charter legally that doesn't need to, but I think the intent was for purchases of this magnitude because it, there's two things. One, it's, it's the purchase of that this year, but there's also an ongoing cost of this. So what's in the, in the budget, there's, there's different numbers, but say it's somewhere between seven hundred and fifty, because they're still finalizing what the proposal is at a million. But over six years, that's really a proven expenditure of one point five million, between one point five and one point eight million dollars. So it's a pretty significant issue. And so this motion is really is let's, let the voters decide, let them get engaged, let them make a decision. And so that was sort of, sort of the thought.
All right, and.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Sean.
So under the first referendum question, number one, it says, do you favor approving the school budget? Question I have is the definition of budget in this sense. Does that include, and this is maybe to the town manager, who then can defer this to the town clerk, is that, I don't know what it, I can't remember, does that include CIP? You're also approving the CIP?
I believe it does.
Because that's what is going to be on the twentieth, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And anybody, Jim Marie?
I am not in favor of this motion. To be honest, I don't know, what are, what are we sending to referendum, the voters? Nothing's been decided yet. I know the school board's meeting tomorrow night. We've got a joint workshop next week. I think it's premature at this point to talk about putting anything for referendum. I know Peter talks about the number of emails he's received. I've counted my emails, and I've gotten forty-eight emails in favor, twenty-one against. So, you know, that's what I, that's what I see. I certainly understand people's concerns about the increasing taxes in the town, and I'm certainly for tax stability, but I, I, I just don't think that, I think we're premature in, in even considering sending this to referendum.
Yeah, I think, and I, as far as addressing that issue, I think the reason that it, that's here tonight, there's also a timing issue. We haven't reviewed it, we haven't gotten that information, but in order for it to be, and Tom maybe can help, in order for it to be anything on the ballot, it has to be decided tonight, correct? So, so this isn't really an issue about should the laptops, it's really about should it be a referendum item for our public, the constituents, to decide? And that's, that's sort of the reason that it's here.
Yeah, it's, and totally pleased, you're the election person, but as I understand it, with June ninth as the chosen date for the validation vote, it would make sense, at least in my estimation, that this be included on that same, at that same day. Because of requirements that ballots completed and available for early voting or absentee voting.
That's correct.
We need to back up and approve this warrant this evening, so in fact, the, the warrant is available in time for absentee voting. So that's really why it's on your agenda or up for consideration this evening.
And I certainly understand that, you know, timing, if we were to put this out to referendum, however, there's nothing that says we couldn't decide on May twentieth that we wanted to go to referendum and have another referendum down the line. It doesn't have to be on this ballot that's coming out June ninth. Again, I think it's premature.
I'm, I'm not following the timeline. I do understand why, I think there's a preference to have it on the referendum for June ninth because the fact is that for several years, we've had an opportunity, or the community has rejected the first reading, or I should say the first referendum in a couple of seasons. So in order to make sure that we have subsequent referendums before the end of the fiscal year. So, but, but the question I have is, then why are we deciding what the school, what the budget actually is, as well as the towns? Because I would think that you'd still need to post that same ballot so that they can decide that. So I'm, so maybe through the town clerk, I kind of.
Absentee ballots have to be made available seven days prior to the final vote on the budget. However, when we issue those ballots, they cannot be received back until after the vote of the budget. But by law, the way it's written, we're required to have those ballots available to the public seven days prior to the final vote.
I knew you were smarter than all of us. If I can solve it. Chairman, I, I too am not in favor of this. The fact is, it's already going to be, the, the total question is already going to be on the, on the referendum question. Guarantee it's a subset of the existing CIP requests, or however that is being presented. So there is an opportunity already for the citizens to reject that if they so choose as a result. If anything, I would hope that the council would consider that the three questions, I think that's been referred to as the Goldilocks, questions of too high, acceptable, or too low, maybe modified, because I know that was one of the recommendations or questions at the forum where it's a little bit more specific. While I wouldn't want this to be too lengthy of a ballot, because there are many options. I mean, if you think about the yes and the no, there's going to be six questions under there at minimum, let alone now we're going to put in there also about whether or not they support the laptops. So, but I'll be honest with you, I actually fundamentally disagree with the request because there is a process one in place. And by the way, this also ties into the request or the recommendation that the, the town's budget goes to the citizens. There is a democratic process in this town. It's been in place since the selectmen converted and the citizens voted to go from a selectmen process to a town council and manage a process that allows for, and trust both of our organizations to make reasonable and responsible decisions. And then if we don't, and it becomes unfavorable, then there is a referendum process to recall that process. And so at least on the town side, as I apply it to this particular issue, you know, that referendum process says they need to get, I believe it's twenty-five percent of signatures from the last gubernatorial, and then it goes back to referendum if we make a wrong decision. So, well, this will be decided by the voters already. You know, maybe we should be looking at the three questions and being able to better define what they are so that we can take that into consideration.
This is really a complicated question. We're talking about an, kind of an ad hoc, informal polling, straw poll referendum as opposed to a formal referendum. And I don't like ad hoc processes when, when you're dealing with the public because creates confusion. This isn't like buying a truck. This is involved, involves launching a one-on-one computing program at the high school. It's elaborate. It's a substantial program. It involves the purchase of equipment, the purchase of software, the purchase of licenses, network support has to be enhanced. We have to hire IT technical support people. There's a whole range of things involved here. I have really kind of two basic viewpoints on, on this whole issue. One is, I think any reasonable person would say we have long since passed the point where we don't realize that computers are an integral part of the educational process. That we've, we've waited to this point is one thing. There are always restraints, budgetary restraints, but now is the time to do it. So I, I fully support the idea of advancing this program. My other viewpoint, and I've expressed this before to most people here, it's expensive. And, and we're, and we're committed to trying to maintain some predictable budgets. This doesn't come just as a capital, a capital investment, you know, where you've got twenty years. We're talking about adding probably three hundred thousand or more every single year to the budget, once we adopt this program. So it has a huge financial effect. And so, I mean, we had a joint finance committee meeting in school and town a few days ago. A proposal was submitted for consideration that would be able to lessen the tax impact on our taxpayers. And I found it quite appropriate that we move in that direction, because I think we need to lessen the tax impact. And we have to find ways to both advance the schools' programs, because the things that they were submitting are clearly appropriate and, and would contribute to the benefit of our community in terms of advancing education. But we have to balance it against the cost. And, and that's, that is a huge issue for me. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking, I'd like to see the discussion that started the other day about how to make it have a reduced tax impact on us, continue to go forward. And I think the school finance committee is going to meet to continue that discussion. And that's quite appropriate. Therefore, things are up in the air. For me to support this at, at this time just seems inappropriate. So I really can't at this point.
Yeah, I'd just like to kind of address a couple of these. My intent here wasn't, I mean, I, I hear you, Bill, and I, I'm kind of in the same place. I'm not sure where I stand on this. This isn't about the laptops per se. But what it is about is who should decide? And the problem is, Sean, I hear you, that the problem with capital improvements, when a school budget gets approved, no matter what that number is, that capital improvement will automatically get approved, because that's just the way the budget works. When the voters sign off on the school budget, they're signing off on the capital improvement. So whatever number gets approved will include the laptops. And what I, this is only trying to tease out, you heard through the controversy tonight, and I, the feedback I've gotten, you know, you cited numbers, and you heard folks tonight, this is really kind of a issue that people feel very passionately about on both sides of the issue. So this isn't about whether it's the right thing or the, you know, it's more about who should decide. We really should ask our constituents, instead of us making the decisions for them, that it's time and it's the right investment, it's their money, they really should have an opportunity to let us know if they support it or not. That's the intent of bringing it forward, is let the voters express their view. And that gives us all a better sense of where the community is. After all, we're supposed to be here to represent them, not for us to decide for them how we spend their money. So that, that was the intent.
I kind of agree with Peter. I also agree with Bill. Bill brings up an excellent point. This isn't really about capital budget anymore. This is about a new program in the school department, and it's, it's not a, a one-time deal. It's an ongoing program. And it really should be a line item in their budget, their operating budget. To me, it shouldn't really be capital. And it's more about how is it going to be funded? But it would be interesting, I, you know, throw something like this out in a time when, when revenues are just up. are just up and to air all over the place. People in this town have a lot of opinion about the way we spend money. And the more input that we can get from them, I think the better off we'd be in the long run. Not that the town council really has anything to do with it. This is the school budget. We're bottom line.
Yep, I did want to mention, so first, just a fact, one is, if I calculate correctly, there's probably been four charter review committees since the enactment of our charter. And never once, I don't believe, they have ever recommended that we change the process that we currently have, which I respect based upon their recommendations. That doesn't mean a future charter committee could not make a recommendation that we change it. I would need to verify it, but obviously by the fact that it's still in the charter, it must have either been introduced and failed or never introduced to change it. And they tend to be generally conservative in the sense of making sure that the citizens' opportunity for involvement is always increased and better going forward. I did want to mention, because it's been a couple of times, so fire trucks generally cost more than $400,000. Just as it was presented last year and voted on, every single one of those generally will be sent to bond, I'm sorry, will be sent to the voters for approval. So there was a statement made by a citizen that somehow implied that we've been inappropriate in making that decision. Well, the fact is that the citizens did approve that because that item is included. Last is, you know, Peter, I totally respect what your intentions are. We've talked about it a little bit. I'm not questioning the intent here. I just simply fundamentally disagree in that process because I do believe that the citizens in the majority trust what we do as well as the school board. And Ed, you know, I agree, the fact is, the school board decides where the money is spent. The citizens decide how much, they decide where it is spent. And technically speaking, just like the operating budget, the school board can decide after it's approved to realign their budget and spend it on something different that aligns with what they think is strategically needed for the school system. So simply whether we put it in at 750 or whether we do it at the 900 as the overall number, they're charged with that authority. So to suggest that, you know, somehow it's going to absolutely be done, the fact is they technically could actually change it. I hope they don't. But I think there's a little misconception about their authority to be able to do that because they can. They can sit there and say, you know what, we need it for something else. And they are allowed to do that.
But Sean, I think, I think in order, sort of, we've talked a lot about transparency and full disclosure. The number that voters see when they go to the polls to approve the school budget for next year won't have a dollar one in there for the laptops because the laptops are in capital improvements, which they don't see that number. So they're not really approving. So for you to say that it's, we're approving the number, it's, what I'm just trying to do is to make sure the citizens understand that they're approving the operating budget, but the capital improvement is a cost that's coming in future years. And as pointed out by Bill, it's a longer-term commitment. The number that we're talking about is two to three times that amount over time. So I just think, I would rather err on the side of being transparent, open and giving, turn this over to voters, let them decide. And this, you know, this really, the charter, at least in the conversations I've had with those that did craft the charter, it was meant to apply to these types of things. Language in there doesn't support it the way it is without a legal opinion, but some of the original people that drafted the charter said this would be the type of thing they had intended that voters should weigh in on. So I'm just trying to respect that. That's why it's here, so.
All right, my turn. Okay. So, I have a couple of thoughts on this item. I've personally gone back and forth. I believe by and large that the intent laid there in the charter, and just because you draw something up many, many, many years ago is a prime example of you can't predict for everything. Certainly, I was here as a new councillor when charter commission was active. It's not quite a big book to have and not necessarily reflective of the time, but ultimately it didn't pass out a charter commission to go to referendum as being a higher number. This is, my position on this item for tonight is I don't have enough information on the proposal. And what happens with the proposal is going to dictate how I feel about whether this needs to go to referendum or not. I feel a little differently about this number when there's a parent buy-in because at that point, it becomes a loan. And so I can justify it to me. I can say, all right, I'm in a shade of gray right now because there's an intent question, but it's really more of a loan and I can live and play within those shades of gray. If it's not and it's a full expenditure, I happen to be in agreement with Peter that I believe it belongs as a referendum question. Because you're not talking about a one-time purchase, you're talking about a shift in how we deliver something. So again, I think that intent kind of falls into that charter piece. How do we want to deliver things? And how do we want to deliver large things? I'm not afraid of referendum because either they stand on their own merit or they don't. We've never, to my knowledge, not passed a fire truck. We've never, you know, we passed a school, we passed an expansion on the high school. I mean, you advocate what the need is and you put the facts out and people agree with you, it should pass. If it doesn't, then you know that you were fundamentally wrong. So again, I'm not afraid of the referendum process. I do however, want to preserve my right as a councillor for a motion to reconsider depending on where this proposal goes. In order to reconsider, I must vote with the majority. And that's a procedural, I'm just kind of putting that out there. So my intent, because I can hear, I can hear and I can count, believe it or not, not very high. I know where the votes are going, so I'm reserving my judgment for the next meeting because depending on how this proposal shakes out, I may be supporting you, Peter, in sending this to a referendum at some point. It does not necessarily need to be when we do the school validation vote. It could just as easily be in November or we could have a special election over the summer. There is more than one way to skin a cat. So with that, oh, I thought we were going to vote. Come on, Sean, it's all right.
Well, I have a question. No, I have a, well, I understand. And after 10 o'clock, no new business, right? I agree. A question, I just want to make sure that it's understood. We do have legal opinion that says that we are acting properly and have acted properly in the past because I want to make sure that no one interprets that we are doing something illegal or inappropriate from a...
I believe that there was nothing that prohibits, although we have an opinion that we can move forward, but there is nothing that prohibits us from sending it to referendum. Is that correct, Tom?
Certainly. But... I'm sorry, what I meant about the legal question was more about the capital expenditure itself and the $400,000 question around intent. And that is that, the legal opinion is that even though this is greater than $400,000 because of how it is ministered, it does not violate the actual charter.
Yes, I do have a legal opinion.
Okay, that's what I wanted to...
I share that with you that says that.
Thank you.
So, anybody else wish to speak?
Just one other question. This is a non-binding expression of opinion. Regardless of how it comes out, does it make any difference? Right? Yeah, informal polling's not a good idea. It's what it says here. The following is a non-binding expression of opinion.
Non-binding referendum question.
Right. It's the same as, do you think that the non-binding expression of opinion of the school board, the school budget's too high, is it acceptable, is it too low? It's an opinion. I don't know why we're making such a big deal out of it. We just want to know what people's opinion is. Go ahead.
Do you mind? I can answer that. I think it's, I think it's a bad precedent to send something out like this as a non-binding expression, to be honest with you. Either you're going to vote yes or you're going to vote no. And I agree with Sean's interpretation that it's included in the budget validation as it is, to be honest. So I just think it's bad precedent and that's one more reason why I absolutely would not want to see this go out, at least worded in this way in particular.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Oh, the amendment.
And that's two, and all those opposed, and that is four. Now, back to the main motion. Act on the Request of Just the Date and Time and Location of the School Budget Validation Referendum for Tuesday, June 9th, 2015. And, any other discussion on the main motion? And seeing none, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. And I do need to just take a moment to, if I could have a quick consensus. It is past 10 o'clock, there is no new business after 10:00 PM unless fine folks decide if we would like to maybe suspend rules and then take up the next item, which is an act to move forward with our last workshop on pay-as-you-throw.
Yeah, I would move to suspend the rules and take up order number 15-034.
Second. And all those, which you do have to vote on to suspend the rules. So, all those in favor of suspending the rule? And, oh, that was one too. All those in favor of suspending the rules to take up the last item? Okay, you know. And, so, order number 15-034, Act to Charge the Energy Committee to Review the Pay-as-You-Throw Program to Study and Recommend Viable Methods for Achieving Reducing Waste and Saving Money. Prepare a townwide plan and develop recommendations for the town council and provide a report to the council one year from the date of approval of this order. Anybody that wishes to speak on this item?
Oh, really?
I'm against the pay-as-you-throw, but that's because I'm a big recycler. So, and I don't even put my cans out every week. I mean, I'm just, and I put the recycling out way more than I put the trash out. So, coming from that perspective. Oh, March 28th, 54 Beach Ridge Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was trying to be so quick.
Thank you.
But I know that there are tags on each can and I did write a little thing into the paper saying, can't we track by the cans and only, you know, that's carrot and stick, and only do the stick for the people that aren't recycling? Because I don't want to start buying bags if we recycle for the environment. So then we're going to go and buy bags and add to the environment problem? I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me to spend money that we don't need to spend. We have these nice reusable cans that we use all the time, then to start buying bags and add to the waste stream. Now we have bags. So I just, I just am opposed, you know, environmentally to the whole concept reuse, recycle, don't start adding to that. And I think with the tags on every can, there should be a way that we can see what, I mean, you know the weight, you know the weight every time you dump, so that we should be able to see who's recycling and who isn't and address it directly to the people who don't recycle.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Robert Rovner, 4 King Street. Has the town, in this pay-throw program, have you ever considered just letting all the residents hire their own trash company and get the money out of the budget completely? Everybody can, the council would approve different vendors to come into town and then we as citizens could choose the vendor we wanted to use. I can just give you my own experience in two different states. In New Jersey, waste management handled all the trash in the community we were in. On Mondays, they picked up all the grass cuttings. On Tuesdays, they picked up all the recyclables. And on Thursdays, they picked up all the garbage. In Colorado, where my mother-in-law lives, they contracted with their own private vendor. And there were 10 houses on the block, there might be 10 different choices. Majority of the time was, there were maybe two or three. It's just a suggestion, but this would eliminate a problem for you and with free money up in the budget. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Drew Stevens, Sixberry Lane. Sorry, I don't have the name of the company right now, but I work with an organization in Portland that started using a composting company. And is that something Scarborough has considered doing? They give you the bins that you can use. You then get the compost picked up by the company and they deliver soil that you can then use for landscaping. And it ends up paying for itself, it doesn't cost you a dime to do it. And it's an organization. I know large groups in Scarborough, they'll give you different, in Portland, that have used the service, they've been using it for over a year and it's been working out for them. Has that been something considered by you?
I guess, well, I think perhaps the devil's in the wording. I think, I'm running off of the agenda. Study and recommend viable methods for achieving and reducing waste and saving money. So as part of their task is to, you know, because that was one of our consensuses coming out of that workshop was to review, you know, alternatives, you know, recycling, composting, you know, that they should be tasked coming up with a broad series of...
I'm just wondering if that is a, that has been reviewed already?
It hasn't been reviewed, but that's what we're tasking the committee to do.
Gotcha.
Look at all concept proposals.
Would it be helpful to give you that information or do you already have that?
Certainly, yes, it certainly is.
Be in touch with me if you're pleased to have that conversation.
You? Okay, yeah, I know they've been, they do a lot of cooking and so they have a lot of compostables and it's been working for over a year, so I'll get you that information. Thanks, Drew.
Thanks.
Sure.
Anybody else wish to speak on this? And seeing none, we will go ahead and progress with the council.
Move approval?
Second.
And any questions?
So this is a very nice solution to a very difficult conversation to some extent. The first is that I do have a question. I would like to see actually, potentially, and I'd go on the advice of the manager, and the very last statement, it says provide a report. A report is useful, but a recommendation is more important and more useful. So I would hope that if everyone else agrees, I'd like to amend so that there is actually a recommendation coming from them. And secondarily is that with the two speakers, I hope that you might be willing to be participants. I'm not sure if there's any openings on the energy committee, but definitely being participants at the committee level will be very useful.
If I could just point out, I think if you back up online there, it does say prepare a townwide plan and develop recommendations for the council. I might suggest it's already considered. It might be nice to have a formal report so we can have something to react to.
That's true, it's in there.
I should mention, we had initially drafted a new ad hoc committee, but almost the same day we completed that, the energy committee convened and to a person, they were excited about tackling this issue. So that's why it was drafted this way and it makes perfect sense. The energy committee, many of these issues touch sorts of things we're already talking about. And I provide staff to this group, so I'll be integrally involved throughout as well.
Okay, anybody else wish to comment? All right, and all those in favor? Not as unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, standing in special committee reports and liaison reports. Who do you want to start with you?
Given the interest of time, nothing significant to report, so move on.
Yeah, it is sort of late. No, no meaning.
No meaning. I'm going to shuffle that that way. Do you mind?
Oh, yes, just real quickly, long-range planning. They're going to be having an event called a charrette. And I forget the dates, it's the weekend of June 5th and 6th, I believe, at Higgins Beach, just to get input from all of the citizens at Higgins Beach about zoning changes, of making zoning a little more reasonable at Higgins Beach. And we're meeting this Friday at 8:00 AM, bright and early, before I'm awake, but it's okay, on long-range facility planning and I can't remember what the other thing is, but anyway, that's it. I brings Fred.
We, as a finance committee, met numerous occasions. I'll let the chair address the details of that and that's been most of the committee work. The energy committee, I met and as it was reported by the town manager, very strongly expressed interest in this effort to try and find a better way to do trash and recycling. interest in this, this effort to try and find a better way to do trash and recycling. And there is a big composting piece to it. If you look at the data from Waste Zero, it isn't just more recycling. There, we need to find a way to introduce composting into, into the equation.
Um, so I actually have a few things for finance in particular. I'm going to pass these down. There's actually, I believe, four handouts. Thought it was important that the finance committee provide you with some information and data that has been provided to us, just so that you can peruse it and if you have questions, so that we are prepared not only for the workshop next week, but also for the May 20th issue. In that packet, there is really, sorry, three pieces of information, four, sorry. First is the joint finance committee meeting presentation that was given to us regarding the responses from the superintendent regarding major issues, or three primaries, I think it was three or four, questions and issues that were brought forward and he provided detailed. That's really supported then by two additional pieces. First is the five-year data history regarding Scarborough's placement in comparison to, I believe, what he called the cohort of comparable communities that dealt with per pupil expenses or per pupil trends. And last is, I will state, which is the thicker package, is a 20-year analysis that really trends out over that 20 years, what has been the actual performance, both in comparison to those cohorts, but regarding our average as it compares to the cohort, but then also our average in spending as it compares to the state. I think it's extremely useful information and I wanted to express my gratitude to the superintendent and his staff for presenting that. The last piece is really, want to give you at least a heads up, even though we haven't made a final recommendation on the total budget. The next document really has been the one piece that we have come to conclusion, barring any future changes at the, at the next meetings, is really where we have started looking at on the municipal side regarding expenditures. The manager is also, this was the manager's recommendations as well as the recommendations of the, of the committee. And I'll probably provide greater detail at the 20th meeting regard, regarding the difference. In addition, there are two tax competition sheets, I'm sorry, four tax competition sheets that provide the detail of what the impact of those decisions have been. It does take into consideration some adjustments that were made by the superintendent that haven't been fully deliberated at the, at the finance committee level, but at least it's there so that you can understand what is happening and I'd be happy to make myself available to answer any questions. Last, not last, there's a couple more items. First, want to mention that we do have the joint workshop between the Town Council and the School Board and not just our committees, but really as a, as a whole governing body that's on May 13th and that discussion starts at 7:00 PM and it is about their budget. That will hopefully give us direction. The Town Council's Finance Committee will be meeting at 4 o'clock on that same day to begin its dialogue, if not make a decision, so that we can then make a recommendation or at least make known what our recommendation is at the workshop and provide some advance information for your consideration before May 20th. And the other item I did want to mention is I really wanted to thank, having sat up on the stage with the finance chair of the School Board and our staff, really wanted to say thank you to everyone who participated, especially those who helped organize that. Tom and the superintendent were a driving motivator behind that. I think it was extremely successful. I believe I heard a comment that we had about 140, 140 participants. Of course, many of them were, we included in that, School Board members, Town Council members, as well as staff that were there to provide information that was available. So the big piece I really wanted to mention was I really wanted to thank Kevin Freeman, who was our moderator and again, participating in town activities because he did an incredible job in, in both organizing, but also making the presentation. Last, but not least, as chair, I do think it's important, I've made this promise when I did become chair, that as questions are asked, as part of the budget process, that we should be able to answer them relatively quickly. So I wanted to answer four questions that came up as part of the public statement. The first is, I want to make sure that it's understood that my personal comments about my personal opinion, I did try to deflect and make sure that people understood that it may not represent the entire consensus of the council. So I hope that people understood that because while I tried to deflect it as many times as possible, it got to the end where they just continued asking. So I wanted to stress that I believe what I said regarding forwarding the budget item, what I said was that, that it, that the issue would be forwarded to the, for consideration by the Town Council. I didn't say it would actually be consideration because that's something that we would have to decide as a whole. So I just wanted to clarify that because it hasn't been presented yet and I have made in a conversation, an update with the chairwoman, I have mentioned that that was one of the items that was asked from us. So I will rely on her leadership to, as well as others, to determine when that should come to the council, if it should. Last is that, I'll get rid of this one. There was a question about how did this question come to the Town Council about the laptops? The town charter is very clear. The School Board approves the superintendent's budget and it's forwarded to the Town Council. It's only by means of the town manager that it is forwarded, so whatever their recommendation is, is what came to the Finance Committee. So it's not some conspiracy behind, well, why didn't it get stopped before? It says specifically that the superintendent and the School Board forwards their budget to us. So that's why we are considering it. And then second, there were specific questions asked about, I think it was, I don't like naming names, but I wanted to mention that Ms. Gleifstein asked some questions or had questions regarding laptops. I just wanted to mention that that, those questions would be appropriately forwarded to, or should be forwarded to the School Board Chairwoman because their Finance Committee and their Board has been very forward and very open about answering questions and I would rely on them to answer that because it's specific to their school mission. With that, thank you.
Hey, sorry. Just real quick, one committee, Appointments Committee met this evening. We do have some names to post. We have Chris Carrick, a large member with a term, full voting member, sorry, with a term to expire in 2016 on the Pest Management Committee. We have Erica Snow as a first alternate with a term to expire in 2016 on the Coastal Waters and Harbor Committee. Selfish Conservation Committee is Paul Erickson as first alternate, Erica Snow as a full voting member, with a term for 2015. Zoning Board of Appeals, Post Dean Hebert, the second alternate position with a term to expire in 2016. And that's it for appointments. Off to Town Manager Report.
In the interest of time, just two quick things, just a follow-up on the budget forum. In the end, we took questions that evening and had some submitted in advance. To my surprise, the questions were almost evenly split. 2038 were town-related, some of those were processed and we answered, and 37 for school. Those are kind of an interesting takeaway. And by your estimation, about 110 people were non-staff related there. So I think that was a extremely good turnout. And just, I think you all received invitations, but the groundbreaking for the Waterstone Retail Facility up off Gallery Boulevard, this is across from Lowe's, tomorrow at 10:30. I know Karen Martin said go and I'll be there, but I believe the invitation was extended to members of the council who do wish to go. Thank you.
Across from Lowe's.
Item number 11, Council Member Comments. Start on the other end, Mr. Sean.
I just want to, we heard a lot this evening about the school's budget in particular and I don't want the lack of comments tonight from myself and my personal comments to indicate that I won't be willing to share those at the next meeting because I will share my opinion at that time.
No?
Yeah, I would join in that. I thought it would be far more appropriate on May 20th to offer comments on more detailed questions about the budget.
I would ditto those two, but I also told Jackie I would read the announcement. The Kiwanis Food Drive for the Food Pantry, Thursday and Friday, drop-off during business hours, Bitterford and Saco Savings and Raw &amp; Forest Fence, which is on Payne Road. And Saturday, 9 to 1 at the Black Point Church and at Dunston Fire Station. We really are in desperate need of canned goods and dry goods for our, our neighbors in need. So any donations you can make for the food pantry would be great. Jackie, if you call her, and she's putting out her number here, so write it down if you any, you want to know Jackie's number. It's 883-2451. Call her and she'll come pick it up if you can't drop it off. So anyway, there you go, Jackie.
Everybody have a nice evening.
Nothing new, just sort of what I've said in the past, that there's a lot of energy this year around the budget. So I just encourage, there's a lot of good information that's out there. There's been a lot of, you know, joint things that have been published. Just everybody, just encourage everybody to get engaged, get informed and show up at the polls to vote. Thank you.
And I wish I could be that quick, but bear with me. I do, well, let's just start with, we do want to offer condolences, as we, I did not do them last time, so I'm going to try to do them this time. Offer our condolences to the family of Matthew Brady, who is a local kid that grew up here that, I think was a couple of years ahead of me, but to the family of Gordon Clark, the family of Charles Foley, and to the family of Roger Knight. You might recognize that name from Smiling Hill Farm, which is our Westbrook Scarborough mine there, I think it's own property here. So again, our condolences to those that have passed on. And real quick, I do just want to, in the spirit of recycling and all those lovely things, Public Works is hosting on Saturday, May 9th, from 8:00 AM to noon. Their household hazardous waste drop-off right there at Public, Public Works. And then exceptionally quick, and I apologize because again, it's getting late, it did offer to speak a little bit about the budget process. I'm going to do that as quickly as possible. We do not direct anybody as to how they submit their budget. The Town Manager submits, the superintendent submits, there's no action of the council that approves or rejects for changes that's submitted, it's submitted. We as a council at first reading can take that number up or we can take any other number up. It's kind of irrelevant because as submitted is its own action and as we start the process at first reading, it's really just not it moves the process forward. As we move along in that process, second reading is of course, when the town half gets approved or disapproved and we play with it on the floor and debate it and move things around a little bit. And then of course, we do something with the school side and then we send it to voter referendum. That is pretty well black and white. That's not, you know, we, we don't necessarily create the rules. We, we work within the rule sets to us with the charter and the main set, you know, some of the main state of mains rules. I know there was a question about, could we speak to, you know, what, what authority we have? We kind of have none. That, that, that's the bottom line. We, we can't change those rules and it's by act of charter and it would be by act of main, main state law. You know, they would, there are different things that come into play that we, we just don't control about how the process goes along. But I did say I would kind of speak quickly to that and that was I cognizant of what my vote was on, on first reading and towards the process. I was very cognizant of what my vote was. With that, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.